...of the Richmond Public Schools Board on Monday, August the 16th, 2021. Madam Clerk, please read the electronic statement followed by the roll call. I told you it's been a busy day in COVID, okay? So without the electronic statement, because we're not meeting virtually, we're in face to face this evening, and you all were so kind. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Lilly. So Madam Clerk, Ms. Clark, would you be so kind as to have the roll call at this time?
Here.
Madam Chair, Ms. White had to step out for a moment, but she is here.
District three, can you get some?
Here.
District four, Jonathan Young.
Present.
District five, Stephanie Rizzi.
Here.
District six, Dr. Shana Harris Mohammed. District seven, Sherwood.
Here.
District eight, Dawn Page.
Here.
District nine, Cole Johnson.
Yes.
Madam Chair, we have four.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. All right, moving along with our agenda. The next item on our agenda this evening is public information. We do have some persons that have signed up to speak. All right, first of all, let's look at our agenda. Thank you, the adoption of the agenda. Thank you so very much. Okay, anybody else want to tell me anything? All right, the adoption of the agenda, and then I will also move forward in terms of announcing our interpreters. Sir, would you be so kind?
It was by those in attendance who attended this conference. We'll probably have another interpretation, so I'm not worried that I would accidentally lose that address.
Thank you so very much. And I promise you all, moving forward, let the record show, we will have a hard copy of the agenda for all of our persons in the audience, and including me, old school, okay? That's why it took me a little time to get my computer up and able to follow the agenda. So moving forward, we'll make sure that we make a copy for each person. It's a good opportunity for record-keeping as well. Thank you so very much. So our first item is we finished the roll call, and now we move on with the adoption of the agenda, which is 1.02. Any discussion, questions, amendments to the agenda? Mr. Young, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would request that we amend the agenda specifically to move fall reopening. If I'm not mistaken, I believe it's 4.01, to immediately follow the action item relevant to the vaccine mandate, specifically subsequent 3.01, and then to resume the action items subsequent to that conversation, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Young. So Mr. Young has made a motion. Is there a second to make that change in the agenda for this evening's meeting?
Second.
Thank you. It's been a motion by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms. Page that we make those changes in the agenda as listed. Are there any questions, discussion? Yes, Ms. Doolan.
Madam Chair, I also have an amendment to the agenda, and if Mr. Young agrees to my amendment, perhaps we can kill two birds. My request is to add a board action item 3.06 to discuss a temporary suspension of our open enrollment policy as it relates to teachers and staff.
I would second that, Madam Chair.
All right, so we have two motions on the table. You amended his motion. All right. You amended Mr. Young's motion to make that change on our agenda for three and four, and to also add 3.06 on the board action. The faculty, moving forward.
Yeah, discussion of temporarily suspending open enrollment for staff and teachers.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions, discussion regarding those changes to our agenda? If not, we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk?
District one, Ms. Seth Doolan.
Yes.
District two, Mariah White.
Yes.
District three, can you get some?
Yes.
District four, Jonathan Young.
Aye.
District five, Stephanie Rizzi.
Yes.
District six, Dr. Shana Harris Mohammed. District seven, Sherwood.
Yes.
District eight, Dawn Page.
Yes.
District nine, Cole Johnson.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the amendment is motioned for.
Thank you so very much. Now, moving forward with our agenda as printed. Number two is public information. Please be mindful that each person has three minutes. If you're speaking for a group, you have five minutes, and you will be timed as you come forward. Madam? Okay. Mr. Young has just reminded me that we did amend the agenda, but we did not adopt the agenda. So can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Sir, sir moved.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is there a second? It's been motioned by Mr. Young and seconded by Mrs. Page that we adopt the agenda as amended and move forward for this evening's meeting. Any questions or discussions? If not, we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk?
District one, Ms. Seth Doolan.
Yes.
District two, Mariah White.
Yes.
District three, can you get some?
Yes.
District four, Jonathan Young.
Aye.
District five, Stephanie Rizzi.
Yes.
District six, Dr. Shana Harris Mohammed. District seven, Sherwood.
Yes.
District eight, Dawn Page.
Yes.
District nine, Cole Johnson.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the adoption of the agenda is motioned for.
Thank you so very much, Madam Clerk. Now we can move to public information. As I stated earlier, three minutes per person, five minutes for a group, and I think we have some persons that signed up to speak this evening. We'll call on those persons first, then otherwise you all can come to the podium and please speak. Please be mindful, as listed on our printed agenda and on your internet, your cell phones, or whatever you're using this evening, we ask that if you're not present, we do have your letters, of which were posted on board docs. However, the persons that report tonight, it must be in person. We ask, in other words, that you not speak on behalf of someone else. All right, Mrs. Clark, whom do we have listed for this evening?
Madam Chair, follow the individuals' arrangements to speak. We're asking you to come first. Gloria Ann White, Edith Johnson, Frank Valdez, and all of the persons.
If those four persons will come forward, and we ask that you line up on this side properly. It'll be easier. You can walk in front, it's fine. And if there's anyone else that want to? All right, as long as you all are standing and keeping your distance, please. If anyone else would like to speak, would you be so kind to come forward as well? After these four persons that signed up speak, then the rest of you all may speak as well. And we ask that you sign up on the paper that is on the podium and list your name. Please fill that information in, even though that you may have signed up. And we ask that you state your name first before you speak. All right, Ms. Wright? Thank you.
... I suffered a case of school, my son is from second grade. So, class since in the middle school, we already had some threats. And it's very important that we're required to be quiet because we're getting... There were a lot of ones that did not... Correct? It took a while, but we wanted to make it home with them, not be able to. The only time we could see the absence was when he called me head coach, he called all the head coaches. He was scared of that. He also was very cool about challenging that student, but that student was so... And he got a few things he didn't get to do, so he was very tough. But on time, he did it. Even though, even when he did it, it was a lot. My wife is a teacher, she was a teacher on the campus, we did it all day, she gave me a lot of... Of course, we didn't see that back, we didn't see it in the papers, I was like... And my son got all my respect, he went out, he gave me a bunch of um, friends and stuff, well, and... For him, he wanted to fight him out. He now sees you from... You know, my son is, is very calm, he's got a very... Well, and, and he was...
About the SROs. I've been proud of the SROs and the Richmond Highway School. Um, none of the things that I've seen in the public has happened to me as a part of the Richmond Highway School. But as a parent and a teacher, I've been harassed, I've been disrespected, and things that have been said to me, interpreted into rebellion by the SROs is very appalling. I also find that it is very hard that during the community conversations, it was questioned our staff members or was our job going to be on the line? Well, we took the vaccine and not, and we were promised that our jobs would not be jeopardized due to the vaccine not being FDA approved and that we were going to hold off until then. And I would like to know what happened to that option. Uh, there are staff members and there are students who can't be vaccinated. And as an example, I have a son who can't take regular vaccines because they will jeopardize his medication to keep him alive. And I would hope that the administration improvises and guides to families and staff members who are facing those challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Travis?
Um, I'm here with all the nation of the United States. And all the nation of the United States. Uh, we might think of police officers as being a part of. Just as I said, right, people, police officers are not trained to give them their health. They're not trained in human relations. They're not trained in human communication. They're not trained in human behavior. They're trained in getting involved with the public. And you know, but I feel like it may be a state or a school that's only one of the two. You don't care, um, young black kids for the conversation. Because first thing that's in their minds is harassment and you're changing that by pressure. And we got to understand that a lot of these children are traumatized. And we need to understand that that they go to their home. And where it begins, where their parents and their mothers, we need to have some intervention involving the students and the students. Because it's about when they're traumatized, they're looking at where they're at home, that we get home. Because they got to feel, uh, whatever pain their parents are going through. But they're also traumatized by what we got experienced in from that nature and that they see. And so we need to call for something creative to save these young police officers. Decide to, they may go to suspend them, they may go to expel them, and we are going to address them. I, I would not feel that that's a joke. And I was coming up with, we can stick our words to it. That was a lot of work we had to work through. And all the teachers had decided to work the ladder and be. And so I didn't even know, I didn't see. I didn't open the ladder to be, to be there. And I just stood there and I didn't go up there. I really did not believe in that. But I know there's so many women that go through this, this and that. Because some of them are vulnerable. So if you're calling hard, you have to call the leaders to be able to, there are everything we don't want to do. But we got time to do it. I'm gonna get a second.
Thank you, Ms. Travis.
Hi, I'm Ms. Williams. I'm a teacher at the level five. Four of our participants. I'm speaking today to ask today, first, I ask simple part of the system of living in New York. I'm not tired here, and I'm not tired. How do you do it? As for RPS members, we thank you in full for coming. And we certainly hope you come and not make a statement that, listen, keep my students safe in the world. Not in saying I'm a moron, but you all, you all have a safety that I was comfortable with. And it would be from your face if something dropped, how do you put that risk? Please, vaccine board members, go ahead, let my team present to you that Mr. Mason's parent dead, not his school. Please say that's on the safety sheet. We are ready to reach for you. Second, I'm writing to ask the board to still be waiting at least for this new year. The 2.0 PPA department, fifth grade, resource, this new year and half of the new time. The last thing that had, and I had, had been hard for our children. So hard that it needs to be very difficult to stay still and sometimes force on the one or two way of. Please help us with the waiting for the party for these, uh, people, please, one to one, please, please.
Thank you, Ms. Urban.
My name is Alan T. Our operation is a change. We partner with Richmond Public Schools to bring in partners to talk about early justice within our schools. I was invited to give a response to RPS students that came out and had some requests for the SROs. You know, they had loved the SRO, they clearly stated that they were not able, despite that, uh, uh, they were not able to remove, uh, the trauma associated with the structure of the community. Uh, and I think that we should respect those voices. Um, I know that we're talking about a vaccine mandate, and I, I believe that we can teach science, we can believe it as well. Uh, but I know that over the, uh, last school year, we recognized that there was something in our classrooms and that the virus is something that we all compared it to, and it was enough for us to say, maybe for time, we need to remove ourselves from it. And so my question is, uh, since we know that policing, uh, harms, has been harmful to our children and it's racially discriminatory and discriminatory, and it's also shown in the police transparency act, new information coming out, and that that is a trauma that is not just outside of our schools, but also within our schools. And school, the pipeline of Black Tech Superintendent made that statement that, um, uh, that's not where RPS should be. But unfortunately, uh, if, if, if we recognize that sometimes with COVID, we had to remove ourselves from schools, why can't we think about moving strategically toward reality where to remove police officers and the infrastructure of policing out of our schools? I believe that we can imagine better. I believe, uh, we talked about the ring for RPS, and I believe the rings continue to push people into a system that kills rings and, and, uh, incarcerates people. And so I think that we can do better. I understand this is a complex situation. I understand that, uh, our children deserve safety. But I also believe the crucial part of safety is being able, is moving to the ability beside the arms. And so many of these children that came out, uh, last time, we were able to speak with, showed that there was a danger and there was an arm and there was a trauma. And there was something about the purpose of police that did not communicate that this was a safe environment. I believe we wish to be respected and I believe that we have the ability, uh, to do better than what is proposed. And I hope that we will, uh, be open to doing better by our students.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Mr. Willis?
This is, uh, I'm no disrespecting Mr. Chapman. I would just want to share that actually, I would, I would dare to speak before the law about the day of the President, and I'd exercise the values of the Bible. Uh, my name is Charles Willis. I'm speaking today, yes, presented to the President of the United States. Yes, Grandma asked that I serve the Bible, it's just, it's literally, uh, in public company. I do want to share that, that the bad, the good, and the ugly, we share it all, so. Those that know me, the board members, you know, that I started with the police attorney, so I'm here to tell them. I'm not here to be informed. I ask the board members to change their votes because you have already made your manner, what you're going to do tonight. Because they inform you, it's a beautiful. So, I find I'm working for the school district over twenty-two years with some cameras that you, first of all, before you tell anything bad, let's tell it good. So I do want to congratulate all of the board members that came out and have sent out in your communities. Especially those that came and joined us during national night out on the Richmond Highway. Uh, it was very successful. Thanks to Richmond Public Schools, our school board, our superintendent, Paige, uh, the A District, and then, uh, to Miss Burke from the Richmond Education Company. I believe the foundation that's been helping families. And then I want to thank those that came out specifically, especially we got Sean Jess Thomas and other board members from the Ninth District that came out to the Free Ass Highway and the Free Back to School Celebration. That also, that's what we have been very successful. And we appreciate all that trouble that has caused the community. And let's get to the back of the community. Build George W. Nathan. We can't say this only gendered, I don't know what all the discussion is going to be about. We need to look at Build George W. Nathan. I'm not talking about all of the other students. Because you can't take care of home first, then have to use to care of somebody else. I know you give a book, they're going to get a technical sitting there. But there's always a derailment talking about and reaching the agenda of Build George W. Nathan. And we have to look at the fact that our kids are in danger. Staff are in danger, but I am a parent and I'm talking about the kids, so our kids are in danger. United Communities Against Crime is saying to this board that it is a crime to put our children in unsafe conditions. And we are looking at that. And we're looking at ways that how we can deal with that in a more strategic way. So I do want to share that. The other deals. I've been receiving, uh, some information that was quite disturbing. And I would say to the board members that it's quite disturbing that when you are in a group and you're working together for the better and you save the better of children. And then when we don't agree with one another, you want to kick the egg out of the bag. And I'm pretty sure you all know what I'm talking about, but mainly the folks in the women's room know what I'm talking about. The letter that went out to our school board chair almost in a friendly manner because she did not agree to sign a letter that wanted to be sent to the city council. I think that's appalling. I think it's disrespectful, and I think it's unnecessary. I cannot watch your whole session. I cannot share the things that I'm going to share. But I have the love and respect for all of you all. But when you sit back, and I agree that you don't, whether you, if you do get upset with me, there's something, I still take it in my gullet. Because I know all of you all are pissed. For those that are not in support of community action and conversation in the community about Build George W., I have a problem with that. And for those that attacked the school board chair and asked her to step down from her position because she did agree to a nasty letter, how dare you? It's disrespectful, and we as a community would not stand for it. We would not stand for it. And for that, United Communities.
Thirty seconds.
Stand and share with you that that is a crime, is a, is a moral, is a disrespectful. We're going to be looking at it and watching it. Remember, kids are scared of nobody. Children, same as us, you're doing too much.
Thank you, Mr. Willis.
Um, my name is Jeannie Bauder. I'm a professor. I have big symptoms. On July twenty-third, twenty-twenty, Mr. Madison asked Mr. Parents how long it would take to get police out of schools. Mr. Parents said, both based on this conversation, I will be recommending to the school that we approve SROs for our schools and the City Council to reallocate those ones to mental health professionals. Uh, just cheap and mean action, this is what I will be advocating for. While we presented tonight to Tom Madsen's that promised action from twenty-twenty. The administration could have used this extended ninety-day review of SROs to develop a transition plan that balances the needs for security for staff and students on one hand and eliminates RPS's schools prison tightening on the other. The renaming and re clothing SROs and SROs, SSOs will not accomplish that. And expanding the panoptic scope of SROs and SSOs to include home visits, counseling, and other supports will not do that. Additionally, the administration has noticed that the non-occupational focus on anything except reopening. Families across the district from Alcon and the about reopening this in the Delta area. I hope we hear much, much more about that tonight, including the opening of the virtual program for RPS. Thanks for social distancing and plans early launch. And to end on a more positive note, thank you for committing to mass early on and thank you for proposing vaccine mandate.
Thank you, Ms. Bauder.
Good evening, school board. Um, I just want to start to tell about saying I definitely did not have any commandant speaking tonight.
Please excuse me. Thank you.
My name is Keisha Cummings. And, um, again, I'm sorry, I didn't have an opportunity to speak of board guys in which I've been a member of the NCC in regards to SROs. And so I just want everyone to know that I absolutely agree that SROs should not be in school and in utopian society. But the reality is we have a rich community. Now, I'm proud of thirty-six percent, eleven not true that comes with knowledge. A lot of it is coming from their students. There are a lot of parts of their students currently back down. But let me just say this, I don't know what I, I just work for certain percentage. Those percentage come from under-resourced, underserved areas. And they are in the front row, left and right. And so I know everybody wants to protect the students. But when you pull SROs out of certain schools, you are only protecting a certain demographic of students. SROs do need to be in certain schools. Again, in an utopian society, maybe it was twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year that it had. But this school year, at the beginning, my recommendation would not, would not be to take SROs out. Um, I want to say that I started off, I worked at New York State Elementary School. I worked at Red Bull Elementary School. I worked at Old East Shepherd. I worked at Martin Luther King. I worked at Henderson, and I ended my career in a RPS school system at Spartan Academy. Spartan Academy is an alternative school where quote-unquote kids with extreme disciplinary problems, though. Spartan Academy had zero arrests in the last four years. I hope you don't think it's because everybody was a visiting a pool like that because that was how it was. The reality of the situation was that the culture of the school was different. And the culture was set so that we would not allow the Richmond police to arrest our students. And of all the schools that I worked at, I've never seen a cop supersede administration. I've never seen a.
Thirty seconds.
I've never seen a principal say to a cop, don't arrest that child. And the cop said, forget what you're saying, I can arrest him anyway. So I say that to say, it's really about the culture of the school and really about the administration, and that's what has to change. The culture of the school is what has to change. We had times with this Spartan Academy when I worked here, but we faced something differently. And again, it was zero arrests, and those were the kids that slaved the worst of the worst.
Time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. And sir, I think you're our last person for the evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Baron of School Members. Thank you all so much for your work that you have done to help shepherd Richmond Public Schools through the season crisis. We know that you're committed to students and families and teachers.
Sir, please forgive me. Please state your name.
Oh, sorry.
We want to know who you are. That's quite all right. Thank you.
My name is John Hyer. I'm a teacher here at MLK. The school has been having a blast to be here to build, and I see. And, uh, I apologize. I tend to dispute that, thank you. Um, and so let me get back to thanking you again, because I know that you're committed to students, to families, to teachers. We so much appreciate that you're here, that you're here for us as teachers and all the way to you. Of the Shepherd, the students crisis. So we too want to do what is best and safest for our colleagues and students as we navigate this challenging times. Um, my wife and I are both RPS teachers. She'll be teaching in Henry Marsh this year. And I'll be returning to MLK. We've had our own children in RPS schools. Um, we've been foster parents to over twenty-five children in the past few years. And we're now band parents, and so we love kids. We always want to advocate for kids and do whatever is best, um, for kids. And we will, however, in a sense, respectfully disagree with the proposal, um, on how to best provide everyone safety by instituting a vaccine mandate. The COVID vaccine is not FDA approved and therefore does not fall into the same category as other vaccines. Maybe also, you guys, the chief consider following residents and governors' examples for federal and state employees by allowing those to not agree with the mandate to opt-in to the test. Thank you again so much for all that you have been doing and continuing to do, although the chief would all of us, we appreciate you so much.
Thank you, sir. All right, we do have one more speaker?
Yeah, I'm told to sit down.
Okay, it's okay. Come, as long as you signed up. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I am not a mic person. I am a teacher voice person. Um, good evening. Some of y'all don't eat. Some of y'all don't. Um, but I just wanted to come and say hi to everybody. Um, oh, I'm Andrea Bryant. Um, I'm a teacher at the field ground. Um, and over the past two years, I have become very involved in things and learning and educating myself and trying to just gather information. Um, the one thing I want to say to all of y'all first is it would really benefit our district if y'all community needed more and better with each other. The outside of the nation, while I understand everybody's perspective, so many people don't, and they immediately judge our district based on what they've seen just in the past. Um, the second thing I want to say is, please do not go for this mandate. Um, while, yes, I agree, everyone should be vaccinated. I went and got vaccinated, even though I felt a weird about it. But there are a lot of people that we cannot ignore the cultural significance of how people react to doctors. Even today, there are doctors who have misunderstandings and misevaluated thought processes on how people of color respond to vacations, to pain, their skin is thicker. Just, these things are still being perpetuated in medical school and pharmacy. I went to the hospital two years and the things I've heard from some of my non-POT colleagues shocked me. So it's not just about old experience, like Tzatziki and all this other stuff. These are real experiences that a lot of our people in RPS community are dealing with. And the vaccine mandate is only going to create more distrust, more pushback. We really need to take an approach of teaching everyone in our district, including our parents, the scientific process. People are constantly arguing about how they changed it, they changed it, because they don't understand that science changes as we give new data. I'm a hardcore science teacher. I'm a chemist down to my coat. And I, I'm all about it, but I.
Thirty seconds.
Can't fight ignorance that way. And then lastly, I'm hearing about SROs. I wasn't paying attention to all of that at first because I was just watching other notes. We can keep them. I'm a field ground, and it's a very mixed school because of the IP program. But when I tell y'all I have seen pure shenanigans. I have seen kids who run across the locker. I have seen kids who threaten teachers. I have seen all this stuff. And yes, we need to build culture.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant, and thank you to everyone this evening that came out during this Liquid Sunshine evening to share your thoughts on behalf of the board. We appreciate you greatly. Colleagues, as we move forward, we're at number three, board action items. And Mr. Young, I'm going to depend upon you as always to let me know who's up to speak, and we'll move from there. So the first item is three point zero one, received for action, Superintendent's recommended employee vaccination, vaccination mandate.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, thank you to everybody watching. And thank you to all of our public speakers as well for sharing your perspective on this extremely important topic. The presentation outlines some of the current data with respect to COVID here in Virginia. As you can see, and as everybody knows, the numbers are rising rather precipitously. And the same is true here in the city of Richmond as well. Even more cases were reported over the weekend. At the same time, we know that the vaccine is the most effective mitigation strategy that is available to all of us aged twelve and older. And that it is strongly encouraged as a key mitigation strategy to fight the spread of the Delta variant. At the same time, we know here in Richmond that the percentage of the adult population that is fully vaccinated is slightly over fifty percent. We can assume, I think it is safe to say, that our staff likely mirror that percentage as they are a broad reflection of the community here in Richmond. Which means it is, uh, I think reasonable to assume less than half of our staff, or nearly so, are vaccinated. And that does pose a significant concern, not just for students, but for other staff and frankly, for all of Richmond as a whole. And that is why we are proposing this vaccination mandate. And let me just say, I do certainly respect the very personal nature of the vaccine. And as Ms. Bryant just noted, the long and very painful history and present as it pertains to the medical industry and in particular, black Americans. And I acknowledge and recognize that. At the same time, with over three hundred million doses that have been administered here in the United States, the safety and efficacy of the vaccine for all Americans of all backgrounds has been more than demonstrated. And so out of an abundance of care and caution and out of a collective responsibility for our entire RPS family, we are proposing this mandate, and the details would be as follows. That all employees would need to submit proof of their full vaccination by October first. And if the board were to approve this recommendation this evening, all employees would receive an email tomorrow to their RPS account. an email tomorrow to their RPS account indicating exactly how they would upload that information. And it is as simple as using a cell phone to take a picture of one's vaccination card and uploading it to their personnel file. I do want to note, as some of our public commenters this evening asked about, there will be medical and religious exemptions. In both cases, there is a simple form to complete, and in the case of a medical exemption, your physician needs to sign off; in the case of a religious exemption, your faith leader needs to sign off. We will not be in the business of debating the merits of a medical or religious exemption. Again, if your physician or your faith leader signs off on your request for that exemption, it will be granted, and in return, you would submit to weekly testing and demonstrating a negative COVID test. I do want to note, this would be a mandate, meaning if there were individuals who did not receive exemptions and chose not to get the vaccine, that progressive discipline would apply. I truly hope and pray that we never have to get there with any employee, but given that this is life and death, we do want to note the seriousness of the mandate. Finally, I would like to add that, though we're specifically talking about employees this evening, we are requesting that the board expand the coverage to all contractors, partners, and volunteers who participate in any way at RPS facilities. Of course, we would have a separate mechanism to verify that, as they are not employees and cannot submit information directly to us in the same manner, but we feel it is absolutely critical that any adult coming into the building has been fully vaccinated. At this time, I would ask if Dr. Avula, who is with us this evening, would be willing to come up and just share a few words about the safety and the efficacy of the vaccine and the role that it can play in helping us stem the surge of the Delta variant, and, of course, answer any of the scientific questions that I am not well suited to answer. So with that, Dr. Avula, thank you.
You, Superintendent Camus, and the Chair, members of the board, and the real political directors, boards, and the classes, and the parents.
For everybody listening, we're having some difficulty with the speaker mic, and so our colleague, Mr. Stanley, is going to... What are we doing? We're doing something that's going to make it better. Okay, so this one's streaming, Matthew? Okay, great. Thanks. I'll start over. Danny Avula, Public Health Director for the City of Richmond, County of Henrico. Glad to be with you here all this evening, and just, I think a few simple thoughts. One, that the COVID virus, this particular Delta variant, is presenting a new challenge for our community. It is real, it is incredibly contagious. The reason we saw that Epi curve shooting up, you know, we had a really great June. We had about a hundred and fifty cases a day total for the entire state, and now we are averaging somewhere between fifteen hundred and sixteen hundred cases a day. So a ten X increase in the number of cases, and that has started to be accompanied by an increase in hospitalizations as well. We have watched this Delta variant around the world, around the country, and there are some concerning things happening. You have seen the headlines about how this is impacting particularly southern states, where we have lower rates of vaccination. We have seen significant increases, twenty-five percent increases in hospitalization and death in other states, and now this somewhat concerning trend of what's happening with pediatric hospitalizations. Now, I don't say this to cause fear at all, because to some degree, we expect that there are going to be more pediatric cases, because so many of our adults have been vaccinated. And compared to last summer, the, you know, everything was on lockdown, right? Schools were closed, summer camps were closed, kids really barely were getting out of their house. We did not see much infection in kids. The summer has looked different, and it's looked different in the context of a virus, a variant that is much more contagious. So we're seeing a lot more infection, pediatric and otherwise. But that context does mean that, my second point, which is I think we can all agree that kids need to be back in school. And to do that, to do that safely for adults and kids, we have got to do everything we can to build in a multi-layered approach to protecting kids and adults. Those layers include vaccination. Those layers include wearing masks. Those layers include acting differently when our children or our staff members are symptomatic. So all of those times where you, as a teacher, powered through and you had a little bit of congestion, or that tickle in your throat thinking it was allergies, this is a different context. You know, all of us would have just showed up to work and powered through, but this is a context where those symptoms very well could be COVID. And so staying home, getting tested, and not returning to work until you have a negative test are going to be a key component of keeping COVID out of our schools. Ventilation, another really important layer. Trying to push as much activity outside as possible, trying to increase ventilation indoors through updates to the HTRAC system, or to open windows, lots of ways to do that. So, you know, we could go on and on about the different layers, but the point is that we have really good data around the world, around the country, to show that when these layers are used in conjunction with each other, we see very little transmission in schools. And so we have full confidence that we can do this. We are going to see kids who show up with COVID. There's no way around that. Kids and staff are out in communities, and COVID is in the community. So we are going to see positives. But we can take steps to minimize the spread of that in schools. And I think RPS and the Health Department have really started to establish the rhythm to be able to do that. Our teams have met together almost daily throughout the summer and even before. Our leadership teams have started to work together to build out some of these protocols. So there's a really tight tie between the Health Department and the school system. And I guess I'll just end by saying that this has been, you know, the ability to do in-school, in-person school, has been really well established, and I have full confidence in our RPS team to be able to do that. Questions? What, is there anything else you all would like me to address, or any questions that you all have for me?
Colleagues, so that we... Dr. Avula, thank you so much for being here this evening and your ongoing support. Mr. Young is going to list and let us know who's, so we all can have the opportunity to hear each other. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here. Dr. Avula, I have a couple of questions. One is regarding the pilot that's mentioned in the presentation. To, it says, to assist employees who've not yet been vaccinated, RPS is working with the Virginia Department of Health to hold mobile vaccination events in August and September. I'd hope to get, you know, a bit more information about that. And I'd also hope to get more information specifically about the ability for students to get vaccines while they're at school. I mean, I think ease of access to both testing and to the vaccine are critical, and I'd like to understand with a bit more detail what kind of access that's going to look like.
Great. And maybe, Ms. Gibson, one thing I would say additionally, when I was talking about the layers of protection, we talked about the importance of vaccination for faculty and staff. That's also really important for the students. So right now, all students twelve and over are eligible to get vaccinated, and we absolutely want as many students as possible to take advantage of that, to get vaccinated. We do anticipate that we will have an approved vaccine for kids ages five to eleven sometime very soon. Pfizer is planning on submitting that data to the FDA in September, and so really, by the end of September or in October, we'll have an approved vaccine for kids down to age five. So ensuring that kids are vaccinated are going to be an important piece of this puzzle as well. And then also the parents of kids, because right now, there are a lot of kids who can't get vaccinated yet, and the best way to protect those kids is what we call cocooning, basically surrounding those children who aren't yet eligible to be vaccinated with as many vaccinated, protected people as possible. So just a few more comments on the importance of that vaccination layer in mitigation. So we will work actively. We've got vaccination events set up for faculty, as we're, we started some with the city this week, and then in August and September, our team will work with Richmond Public Schools. We have plenty of vaccine available, both Pfizer and Moderna, so vaccine availability is not a concern at all. It really is around the logistics of setting up onsite vaccination efforts. Our Health Department team has been doing this, you know, almost daily for eight months now. So lots of practice, lots of capacity to provide that vaccination. There may be times in the future where we contract that out, or we have a bunch of different partners, pharmacies and some other contracted entities who will come onsite and provide vaccinations. We also will work with the school system to actually provide onsite vaccination for students if they so choose to do that. Now, our VDH policy allows for the school system to act in loco parentis, and so if we have parents that provide consent for the child to be vaccinated, they can actually do that at school. And so we'll have to, we've done that many times with other types of vaccinations, like the flu, like T-DAP efforts, for example. So we'll have to work out the schedules and the logistics around that, but we're fully committed to creating as many opportunities as possible to get the staff and students vaccinated.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry. There, so I mean, we're only like a month away, right? Less than a month away. So my ask to both the administration and to your team is to get those logistics sorted out like yesterday. We need, we need to know, you know, how this is going to work. I didn't hear thoughts on testing specifically. I know in DC, they're handing out kits so that people are able to test very easily. Is that something that we can do here, and how can we make that happen?
So testing is a really, another really important layer of that mitigation layered strategy. There is a lot of federal funding right now that has come into Virginia to support testing in schools, and our Health Department team is working with the RPS team to figure out how best to take advantage of that. Is there a screening protocol? Are we only going to use testing when we've identified a positive and we want to test people who have been exposed? So our teams met a couple times last week, and will continue to meet to hammer out the details of the testing procedures. And similarly, I think, I don't know, Melissa, if there's, I think we can send you the details on planned faculty vaccination events, but we'll do as many as it takes to get the population vaccinated.
Thank you.
Ms. White?
Thank you for attending this evening, and I have a couple questions also. And this was, this tonight will be one of my hardest decisions to make. And my question is, I am very much aware this is an airborne disease, I mean virus, and it will attack the respiratory system. I'm also was a chemical, biological, and radiologist in the military for twenty-six years, so I do know about the multi-layers, the layers of protection. And also, one of my schools in my district, they had summer school, and I noticed that when we send multi-layers, and it does also deal with the mask, that our students do not have the proper mask. So they're so big for the elementary, you can't tie them up. So I'm not sure what that layer comes in. My other thing is, I think my colleague just said testing, and I did review that on your, I believe it's on your website, or CDC, whether money was, is available, will be available. And I think that at least weekly within the schools for the children, because there was a disconnect this summer in summer school, as far as when the contracting the virus and sending the childrens, you know, trying to send them home for quarantine. Somewhere, the Health Department and RPS, they had called, and the Health Department said they did not have enough staff. Well, at that time, it's a delay in the tracing. Mr. Camus may mention it that evening, and then you'll see the date is like four or five days, four or five days difference, and they're still tracing. My thing is, how can we make that better without sending a child home four or five days over the weekend, come back to school, and then we have so many that has already contracted the virus? So what do you recommend for that?
Yeah, lots of questions packed in there. Besides, I'll do my best. So let me start with the last one, contact tracing. So there was certainly a time this summer where we were seeing disease rates go down. We hired, you know, at the peak, about a hundred and fifty additional people, and then over time, really started to allow those folks to move on as the need went away. And so now we're ramping back up. Now that we're seeing the increase of disease, we're adding more and more case investigators, we're surging in with other staff to provide that support. And then, again, our teams are meeting almost daily with the RPS team, because the RPS team is also doing a lot of that contact tracing internally. So what can we do to minimize the amount of exposure? So somebody's identified, and how do we keep them from having multiple days of exposure? This is where the other components of prevention come in. So if mask-wearing is adhered to, that is going to make a massive difference. You know, even if somebody has been positive, if they've consistently been wearing a mask, there's going to be very limited spread. Similarly, if people are vaccinated, the likelihood that somebody would get infected or eventually spread higher with Delta than with previous variants, but still lower than if you were unvaccinated. And so ventilation is a part of that, and paying attention to symptoms and getting tested is a part of that. So I think really learning how to execute all the different pieces of this strategy is going to minimize the spread of disease. And as I've said, there are plenty of examples in schools of where this has been done well, and by and large, the transmission rate in schools is a fraction of what it is out in the community. And so schools actually provide an opportunity to do much more, I don't know, standardized prevention, in a way. Your comment about masks is really important, because they do need to be well-fitted, appropriate fitted masks. And so I'll let Superintendent Camus talk about the school's plans to purchase masks, or make masks available for students. Oh, sorry. Yes, so a couple notes. The immediately subsequent presentation is going to go through all nine of those mitigation strategies and how RPS is prepared for all nine of them. On the mask front, we will be providing a cloth mask at the beginning of the year, but also every day, we'll have disposable masks available that are child-sized for every single student for as long as it is necessary. So the availability of child-sized masks should not be an issue at all. Did we miss anything, Ms. White?
While you're done?
Oh, I just had one more question, and you can answer this. The next virus that's on the way, which is the Lambda, is that more effective than this one?
So the Lambda variant is currently a variant of interest. The CDC is tracking, originated out of Peru. About three weeks ago, the first Lambda variant was identified in the United States, down in Houston. Still too early to tell. It certainly doesn't look as contagious or as transmissible as the Delta variant, but if not Lambda, there may be another variant coming down the road that could be. And so getting this right as quickly as possible, getting as many people vaccinated, really figuring out how we're going to adhere to masks, and ultimately, you know, all of these steps we're taking are happening because so much of our population is still- of our population is still susceptible to this disease. When we get to a place where we have 90 plus percent of our population that has either been vaccinated and therefore protected, or has actually seen Delta and, and been infected and developed some degree of natural immunity, our, you know, the, the need for us to wear masks all the time is really going to, is really going to dissipate. And so that may take several months. I, I could see maybe on the other side, you know, of 2022, like in the spring of 2022, if rates come back down, I, I can see us pulling back on a lot of these mitigation efforts. But it really is going to depend on how, how widespread we can ensure that people are protected through vaccination.
Thank you.
Mrs. Page and then Mrs. Dour. Correct? Which one's first?
Thank you for your presentation. I have just one question because I have heard so much research as far, you know, dealing with the science, dealing with the facts. So my question to you, do we need to take extra precautions like for students and staff that have like a chronic disease, respiratory problems such as, you know, could be asthma, you know, things like that? So are there extra precautions that we need to take as, as a school division as far as it relates to the mask?
Sure. So children who have underlying health conditions like particularly respiratory conditions like asthma are going to be at higher risk for more severe consequences if they were to contract COVID. And so it is especially important if they're 12 and over that they get vaccinated. It's especially important either way, however old they are, that their families get vaccinated to protect them. And, and again, in the context of schools, especially important that every adult who can get vaccinated does get vaccinated. If those students are wearing masks, that does two things. It provides some degree of protection to them and it also prevents, you know, everybody else who's wearing masks. It decreases the risk of them spreading COVID to that student who has asthma. So the collective impact of people being vaccinated, everybody wearing masks, and then us taking these other precautions really does lower the risk for everybody. And that's why all of these pieces are so important.
So should we have any concerns, say students with asthma and maybe the effects of wearing a mask? Are there extra precautions we should take?
No, there's no, there's no real concern for a child with asthma having to wear a mask. I think a lot of people have raised the concern of, are you breathing in more carbon dioxide? Yet, you know, there are people in professions who wear masks all day, every day. And so, and there are plenty of studies to show the outside of maybe a slight increase of temperature, because sometimes it can get warm wearing a mask, that there's no untoward effect, untoward effect of wearing a mask throughout the day. So that's not a concern even for kids with underlying respiratory disease.
Thank you.
Thank you. In my correction, Mrs. Rizzi and then Ms. Dour.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, first I want to flag that I'm aware that the people who are watching online were unable to hear the speakers. And so, although, you know, Dr. Avula, thank you for your presentation and I'm so glad that you're here and what you're saying is important. Everyone's important and I'm hoping that we will resolve the technical issues pretty early on if we have those next time. Dr. Avula, my question to you is, I know a lot of people who are reticent about taking the vaccination primarily because there hasn't been much said about the long-term effects, specifically genetic effects that may take place, you know, years ahead of now. Are you aware of any emerging research that talks about that or that gives people kind of a reason to feel more calm or, you know, less uncertain about that?
Yeah, so I, I've heard this concern raised a lot and the reality is that the, the way that the vaccine and all vaccines work, the concept behind vaccination is that you are presenting an invader protein to your immune system and then your immune system does the work. Your immune system responds, it revs up, it builds antibodies so that the next time that you actually are, you know, infected, that when you, when you see the COVID virus, your immune system is ready to defend it. So that basic framework is the same for almost every vaccine we use. And now the only difference in this one is how that initial protein is presented. There's kind of two primary ways. The Johnson and Johnson vaccine is one way. It's called adenovirus vector. The other is the mRNA vaccine. And, and I think a lot of people are also concerned because this is the first real successful mRNA vaccine we've had. But what people don't realize is that we have been, we, science has been developing the mRNA platform for over 20 years. This work started back in the 1990s. And so I, you know, in many ways, I just feel like we are so fortunate that after multiple trials with the mRNA platform, we have had such a successful and a safe vaccine. So the, the broad answer to your question about long-term impacts can only be answered in the context of we've had a lot of other vaccines on slightly different platforms, but that, that still work through the same pathway to be able to, to look at long-term impacts and have not seen real concerns. The number of ingredients in these vaccines, and that's what can cause longer term or, or has been purported to cause longer term effects with other vaccines, has really been pared down. It's a very simple vaccine formulation, so very little concern there. The other thing we've seen is that when vaccines have serious side effects for people, you typically see that within a couple of months of administration. And at this point, you know, with the clinical trials, we have had over a year of people receiving this vaccine. And as one of our public commentators said, 356 million doses that have been administered. And so I think that, that kind of speaks to another issue that people have shared, which is that this isn't FDA authorized. How, how can we feel good about this? And I just, I think it's important to note, the FDA has never had this volume of data on anything it's approved. And, and what's remarkable is that with this volume, to see as few serious side effects and as, as incredibly impactful a positive benefit, it's, it's unheard of in the vaccine world. So there's no chance this won't get approved and likely that'll happen in the next few weeks. The FDA has been reviewing the data that was submitted by Pfizer back in May, Moderna in June. So we, the community, the scientific community expects the FDA will likely move to full licensure sometime in September.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Dour?
Thank you, Dr. Dr. Avula. And I know that your team has been extremely hard at work, working with both the administration and the city. So I hope you know from this board how grateful we are and I personally would not want us to, anyone to imply that you're not working your butt off trying to schedule these vaccine events, et cetera. So I just wanted to say, say thank you for your leadership during this incredibly challenging time. And we're so lucky that we have you both here and at the state level at the helm. I have a couple of questions. One, vaccine tests have been proven to have false positives and I worry that we're going to get into a cycle of having lots of false positives and then everyone has to quarantine, et cetera. So I was wondering if you could speak to that kind of related, if you could talk about the, your recommendation. I know we're going to talk about it with Mr. Camaras and his COVID protocols, but the quarantine protocols, there was a lot of chatter last week about Patrick Henry and the entire, an entire classroom having to be shut down. So I was wondering if you could talk about sort of best practices around quarantine? And I know a lot of families are just, at least I'm hearing that we're going to go to school and immediately every single classroom is going to have to shut down and quarantine. So if you could help assuage some of our concerns about that, that would be great. Three is the three feet suggestion. I know it's a suggestion because it may be physically impossible in some classrooms, but wondering if you could speak to the relative importance of that and what risks we're potentially setting our kids up for. Four is, and this may be a little bit more future forecasting, not as important for tonight, but if you could talk about the need for booster shots and when we need to start planning for that as a board. Five, sorry if I didn't catch it, but free testing kits, are they going to be available? And then finally, six, and I'm done. If all adults are vaccinated, then does that put kids in competition with kids? And does, do, does the vaccine sort of transmit more rapidly among the child, children population because they're the only hosts?
Yep. All right, I'm going to do my best, Ms. Dour. That's a lot. All right, so I'm going to try to work backwards. So that last comment you made, does it put kids at higher risk when more adults are vaccinated? I think what we're seeing right now in the United States, which is the highest rate of pediatric infection and pediatric hospitalization in, at any point during this pandemic, is a result of what you're talking about, is that our adult population in most places has a pretty significant coverage through vaccination. And so the virus is going to the most available hosts. Now, I think that there's another component of that, which I mentioned earlier, which is that like, we're just not mitigating like we were last year. And so kids are in spaces where they're, you know, having a lot more exposure. So I, I think the simple answer to your question is yes, the virus is always going to look for available hosts. The less virus we can introduce into a community, the better, which is why having our staff and faculty vaccinated, having as many of our students vaccinated as possible, and when we have an approved vaccine for five to 11, that we really cover that population as well. So no matter what, getting more people vaccinated is the way out. Boosters. So right this past week, the FDA approved not a booster, but a third dose for immunosuppressed individuals. So people who are under active treatment for cancer or have had an organ transplant or are on ongoing immunosuppressive medications, the FDA authorized a third dose to be a part of their initial course of, of the vaccine. That is differentiated from boosters, which are an additional dose because the, the initial two-dose course where you were fully vaccinated has started to wane and no longer is working as well. We have not seen that yet. The vaccine is holding up really well in most parts of the world. Israel is starting to see that, which is why they're being a little bit more liberal with the, the usage of third doses as boosters that just started two weeks ago. And Israel was ahead of the curve in terms of vaccinated. They were probably a month, month and a half ahead of, ahead of us. So our CDC continues to follow the data in terms of people who were vaccinated early. Are they starting to see waning immunity? What do their antibody levels look like? Are they starting to see increased risk of, of hospitalization, et cetera? When that, when we have evidence to say, hey, here's the timeframe where a booster actually makes sense, I fully expect the CDC and FDA to say, okay, we're, we're going to move toward, towards boosters now. I think boosters are going to take two different forms. In the short term, sometime this fall, I would guess, we will see a recommendation for a, a third dose of the same, the same mRNA vaccine. Manufacturers are currently working on new formulations of boosters that better incorporate the different variants. So remember that our vaccines were made against the, what's the, the original strain of COVID? We call that the wild type strain. But since then, we've had all these different variants. And so right now manufacturers are developing formulations that incorporate those variants. I would guess sometime in 2022, we will see boosters that include new formulations. So how do I, how do I tighten that up? We will likely see a recommendation for third doses of our existing vaccines sometime this fall. And then next year and probably annually from there on out, we will have a booster that reflects the dominant strains of the time. All right, you're going to have to tee it, tee one up for me here.
Free testing kits?
Yeah, so again, federal government has made a significant amount of money available for in-school testing, $275 million for the state of Virginia. DOE is working with school systems and with the health department to figure out what is the right testing protocol. I think a lot of that will likely happen through contracted testers onsite in schools. I don't know enough about how much of that money can be used for testing kits. Now, the, we could also look at other sources of funding. Right now you can buy over the counter rapid antigen testing kits, two for 20 bucks or $24, something like that. So that, that would, will serve as a barrier for many of our, many of our families. But I, I do think there is a possibility to look at purchasing those test kits and using those. Dr. Verre has an addition perhaps? Good.
Hi, I'm Melissa Verre from the, I'm the deputy director over at the Richmond City Health District. I did also want to add, how about better? Great. Just also wanted to add that in addition to what Dr. Avula alludes to with testing through DOE and through the state, we are also looking at opportunities to, at VDH, to procure binax now home testing kits to be able to, to give out to the public and the community probably later in, probably closer to September. And so there is an opportunity that we, we are exploring where we might be able to provide testing kits to the larger community, but specific to, specifically to RPS students in addition to what we're already arranging with the, with the state program.
Thanks, Dr. Verre. All right, the question about false positives. So there are two main kinds of tests, PCR test and the antigen test. The PCR test is incredibly sensitive, so very low false positive rate. That's also the test that takes one to three days to return. You know, we will use a lot of PCR testing in the course of our actual investigations. Antigen testing does have a higher false positive rate, except when somebody is symptomatic. And so when people, you know, have cold symptoms, fever, aches, whatever, the sensitivity of that test rivals the sensitivity of a PCR test. There are still scenarios where we will likely see a false positive and that's when the other pieces of mask wearing, distancing come into effect. Because if, let's say we have a group of high school students and most, like they're all vaccinated and they're wearing masks, those individuals, because they're vaccinated, don't actually have to quarantine if they've been exposed. They will continue to come to school, they will continue to wear masks, and then we will test them some three to five days out. And, and this is kind of the new protocol in the context of vaccination. So being vaccinated will help limit the degree of, of, you know, quarantining out that we have to do. Obviously with younger kids, that's not an option yet. Hopefully will be soon. So with younger kids, if a child is exposed as defined by spending more than 15 minutes within six feet of somebody, masked or not, then they will need to be quarantined. And this is where the procedures around how, how we handle this, you know, is going to vary from case to case, depending on exposure, depending on, you know, how good the record keeping is, how solid the ability to sort of cohort kids in different parts of the classroom. There's a lot of strategies we're talking through with the RPS team, some that have been tried successfully this summer and some that didn't go so successfully. You mentioned Patrick Henry. You know, without going into all the details, one of the big challenges at Patrick Henry was that we didn't have reliable documentation of like who was actually in contact with whom. And the fact that we didn't have that documentation meant we had to make more conservative recommendations about who should actually be quarantined. And, you know, we, we've seen subsequent positives and so I think the conservative recommendation was the right one in that case. I think we will get better at this collectively as, as we head into the school year, both documenting, cohorting, and being able to minimize the impact on the entire classroom. Probably some other questions in there, but.
The social distancing was the other one, the last one. Three feet, what happens if we can't be three feet?
So the, the key thing is that the social distancing is part of, I think Dr. Avula mentioned the layered strategies. And so the idea is as many blocks as you can to make to, to prevent transmission is the key factor here. So mask wearing plus vaccination plus social distancing plus, you know, ventilation and more importantly focusing on where you can't because of size restrictions or you can't strictly adhere to three feet because it's too, because you need to have in person, you need to have people there, it just becomes that much more important to have the mask wearing, to have good ventilation, to have really good sick policies, have people staying home when they're ill, to make sure that we are protecting in as many ways as possible. That's what we've seen happen elsewhere previously in the pandemic is where people were unable to adhere to distance, but but they were able to do other factors, they were able to limit transmission.
Very good, thank you. The next person is Dr. Harris Mohammed.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have two questions. One is for the superintendent as well as our school board attorney. What are the legal ramifications by mandating the vaccine, vaccine for our faculty and staff? And the second question is, would they also do testing periodically for faculty and staff since vaccinated people can still carry the Delta variant of COVID? So Doc, you may, can share some of that information as well, along with the superintendent. But I really, really want to know, well, I wanna know both things, let me say that. But I think that our public needs to be informed if there is a legal ramification for us voting to make something mandated when we can't even ask the simple question of a student if they are on birth control. So I want us to think about what we're getting ready to do. I'm not sure if we can do that. I also want to be clear, I am in full support of individuals being vaccinated. As a 30-year educator myself, I am with children every day, grown people every day. But there, from my understanding, I cannot directly ask someone if they've been vaccinated. And I cannot tell them before they are a teacher in my building, they must be vaccinated. So I'm just trying to understand how we're going to mandate something when I've been told it cannot happen. So if we can hear from our school board attorney, and then our superintendent, and our friendly doctor, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Har, thank you. Hello? Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Oh, I thought I was louder earlier. Maybe that, there it is. Literally right in, anyway. As far as the question about legality, certainly as a condition of employment, you have all types of, types of employees that are on various contracts. And certainly, in fact, I pulled one up, one of your, the contract language up for one of your contracts, and basically indicates, first of all, that employees shall comply with all federal and state laws, Board of Education regulations, all policies, rules, and regulations of the school board and the division superintendent now or hereafter in effect. So that being said, you know, the question is, if a person has been employed, they're signing a contract, there are rules and regulations that may come into play from time to time after a person signs their contract that they would have to adhere to as an employee of the school division. That's number one. Number two, as a pre-employment screenings, as, and as far as I am aware, as far as the pre-employment screenings, there are employee certifications that they have to, that employees have to fill out already with respect to, I'm not speaking of the COVID vaccine, but other immunizations and other, for TB, those types of, those types of certifications that you have to make before you are certified to be an employee. Also, as we've gone along the process of this, the COVID pandemic, the pandemic, excuse me, and I'm breathing hard because I'm trying to breathe through two masks here. The EEOC has already opined in their FAQs, frequently asked questions with respect to, the question has been, you know, can you mandate these types of vaccines? And the answer to that FAQ has been yes, in this instance, because this is a public health issue, that a vaccine can't maybe mandate it. And certainly, I think your question was the legal, you can't ask, oh, so to the, to the point of asking individual students whether or not they, you know, different health issues and different things like that, I'm not prepared to respond to that piece of that. But as far as asking employees as, as a matter of a condition of employment in this instance, I have not found any prohibition against that.
Follow-up, Madam Chair, if I may. So with that being said, you, you stated a couple of points. One, policy. So I think it needs to be very clear in our policy that upon the condition of employment, this need to happen, if we're gonna follow a policy that you just shared. Two, there are not, to my knowledge, vaccinations that teachers or bus drivers or teacher assistants must take in order to be employed in a school division. The TB, absolutely. And if, in their lifetime, they've tested positive, then they, they're required to take a chest X-ray. So I think we, I don't think we need to take a policy that we currently have to try to push what we want to do. I, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate that. But that's the way it is coming across in my ears. And so I want us just to think very clearly about, if we want to put that in our policy for a conditional of employment, then we need to review that policy and then vote on the revision of the policy, have a first or second read, and then move forward. Instead of just saying, because the Delta variant is so critically deadly, the flu, I mean, there's so many other, and I'm not downplaying, please, public, hear me, I'm not downplaying it. But what I'm saying is, we're gonna open our doors for anything else that comes down the pipe. And so I just want us to be mindful, I want us to be clear on what we're getting ready to walk into. I fully support individuals being vaccinated, but I am not comfortable making people be vaccinated in order to, and then on top of that, a timeline in which they must do it, or repercussions where it come about. I, I think, I think that language is uncomfortable for me. I know that language is uncomfortable for me, so I'm hoping that we can come to a happy medium in terms of that, what, what the superintendent is asking us to do. And then I, I had a second question, but she might have, Doc, or Mr. Cameras.
I want, I want an opportunity to clarify.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting that there, I was reciting language from the contract, that's not a policy. And that part of that language in the contract talks about rules as well. So whether the board elevates this to a policy or a rule, I was simply suggesting or letting you know that employees who are currently employed, there is contractual language already, a part of the, a part of what they have agreed to, which would speak to anything, any rules that, that were in place at that particular time or anything hereafter, which is the language of, of that. I do know about the TB, the TBP, so yes, if, I would have to look at whatever the pre-employment screenings are for any other, other screenings or other disclosures that have to be made upon employment. I just wanted to clarify that there is no, I wasn't speaking of a policy.
Thank you, thank you for that, the contractual language. Thank you, thank you for saying that. So my last piece, Mr. Cameras or the great doctor, if you can share, you know, would there be periodic testing for our staff that's currently vaccinated throughout the, the school year? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris Mohammed. We're in discussions with VDH about the extent of the testing program and how to deploy the, the limited resources that VDH and RCHD has, but that is certainly part of the consideration.
And it's always dangerous for me to wander into legal conversation, but it may be helpful to just hear a little bit about the legal precedent that's unfolded over the last few months as, as it relates to requirements. Houston Methodist, a big health system, was kind of the first institution to, to require vaccination. That case went all the way to the Supreme Court and was upheld. Obviously, health system is a little bit of different context than a school. But subsequently, Indiana University, as kind of the front end of hundreds of institutes of higher ed across the country, was sued, went to a federal court where the, the mandate was upheld. You know, I think of, people also feel like it's shaky ground because the vaccine is still under an emergency use authorization. But we've already seen, you know, lots of institutions move towards requirements. And with the expected full licensure that, that, that we'll see likely in the next month or so, I think employer requirements are gonna become the absolute norm, given the just incredible effectiveness of this disease in, in the face of a, of a virus that continues to kill people every day.
Thank you. And I would like to close the question.
Anyone else? Anyone else has questions? Dr. Vula, thank you so much. Thank you so very much to your deputy as well for being here this evening. As always, as stated earlier, you've been with us from the very, very beginning. And we have stepped out on scientific reasoning, as well as what's in the best interest of every child. So we thank you for your continued effort. And we're glad you're with Richmond, Hinraco, and the state of Virginia. And he is a parent of Richmond Public School students. So we thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Chairwoman Burke. And obviously, I do have a very vested interest in those kids and, and.
Yes, you do.
Part of RPS, but just want to express my gratitude. I know that this is an incredibly, this whole year and a half has just been decision after decision. And thank you for taking it so seriously and doing an amazing job. Appreciate it.
All right, colleagues, this is an action item. Before we move to that, we want to continue with discussion. We need to move the mics for, where's Matthew? For the superintendent, please. Now let someone else is coming back up and we can share, it's up to you. Okay. Thank you so very much. All right, Mr. Young, you stated, Ms. Dour?
Chair Burke, are we, are you entertaining a motion right now on this, or are we to wait?
If, so does I, if we're done with discussion. You have a question beforehand? Were you getting ready to make the motion, Ms. Dour?
Yes.
All right, we can do it either way.
If Ms. White can go first.
Well, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, but I closed the question.
All right, we need to vote on that then, correct? She did. The procedure with that, Ms. Lilly, when the question is closed?
For procedural purposes.
Ms. Dour was getting ready to make the motion. Mrs. Mohammed stated she asked to close the question.
Yeah, there is no question on the floor.
That's what I thought, right. There is no question on the floor, so there's nothing to close at this time. That's why I was asking, was there a, okay, thank you. So we're with, Mrs. Dour was getting ready to make the motions. Mrs. White was getting ready to ask a question, but it hadn't been proposed earlier. So Ms. White, the floor is yours, and then we'll move on.
Yes, this question is for Mr. Cameras. You said the teachers had until October the 1st? And even if they got the first shot, school would have already been started. So who's gonna keep track of the first shot to make sure that they actually get the second shot? And part B is, I'm looking at the bullet that you said contractors, partners, and volunteers, that they would receive the information about complying with the mandate directly from the talent office. That's kind of broad to me, because if you have extended day, and we're actually letting the teachers mandate, I would like to see the extended day partners do the same.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Yes, the extended day partners would be mandated as well. In fact, all of those individuals would be. The only difference is perhaps how we would gather and store the information, since they're not employees. That's the only detail being worked out. And as for your first question, all we're asking for is demonstration of both shots of the vaccine by October 1. So nothing needs to be shared in terms of when you got your first shot, just when both are done to upload that and share that. It would be ideal to have that all done by September 8th, but we understand it's August 16th today. Wanted to make sure that folks had time to respond accordingly.
But would that go to the health department or someone in RPS? Are you talking about like a nurse? Who would, when you share it, you're gonna share it just like the students would?
It would be uploaded electronically into your electronic personnel file, and it would remain with the talent office.
All right, and thank you so very much. On television this morning, if I may, there were reminders, you should not lose your card, you should not laminate your card, because if you get a booster or whatever else, your card is obsolete per se. So it was many, it's much information on today's show about not only taking a picture, but putting it in an album, using the scan piece. So that's something I hope that as we move forward, especially with those persons who are coming into our buildings, an opportunity for them to show proof. All right, Ms. Dour, the floor is yours.
I move to accept the vaccine mandate recommendation as presented.
It's been moved by Mrs. Dour to accept this mandate as listed in 3.01. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Dour and seconded by Mrs. Page that we move forward on 3.01 vaccination mandate. Are there any questions, discussion? Mr. Young? All right, Ms. Page, then followed by Mr. Young.
Thank you. I understand both sides of the issues. But for me, our number one priority is keeping our children and our staff safe. And with that in mind, I know too many people that have lost their lives to COVID. And our responsibility is to put our children and our staff first. Thank you.
De Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Vaccination is the surest way to end this global pandemic. And it's why I implore persons every day to be vaccinated. I did it today, I'm sure I'll do it again tomorrow. It's why very first opportunity I was afforded, thanks to RPS, to, to be vaccinated. I did it this spring and in April. We need to be very intentional about conveying our expectations of our teachers and all of our staff, and candidly, all of our stakeholders relevant to the, to vaccination, to vaccine. We need to be very clear that it's our expectation for folks to be vaccinated, because it is the surest way to mitigate this, this threat, this recurring relentless threat. I do have some pause relevant to the messaging pertinent to a mandate. My colleagues know that I regularly speak to the importance in conveying our confidence in the most important staff in our buildings, i.e. our teachers. I'm curious what it says as a district when we consistently second-guess if those persons, who we do entrust are most valuable gifts, are young, are, are young people, are children, to, to watch over and to protect, when we consistently convey messaging that we don't trust them. I saw some statistics that I don't know if are correct, but I saw that the NEA, National Education Association, identified that like 86% of teachers nationwide have been vaccinated. I don't, I don't know that that's correct, but I share that to say that I'm not so naive as to think that there aren't outliers or anomalies within our teacher corps, our teach, teacher ranks. But I suspect that the numbers are rather high, because they do understand, like, I know all of my colleagues do, that vaccination is the surest way to end this pandemic. And candidly, it's just the right thing to do. And we need to speak in that kind of, with that kind of nomenclature, with that kind of certainty. Getting vaccinated is the right thing to do. I just have real pause when we consistently question if our teachers are capable of exercising the kind of decision-making that I would hope we all agree to when we hire them and say that they are a professional, they are the adult in the classroom. So vaccination, yes. Mandate, no.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Is there, Ms. Jones? We don't have anyone else right now. Ms. Dour? Ms. Dour was first, then Ms. Jones? Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add to Mr. Young's point that I do believe the message is really harsh. We do have an individual level of accountability, but also a communal responsibility. And I share that, you know, to ensure that students are safe, that we do all that we can to be safe on a regular basis. I am very nervous about progressive discipline, including also employment. And I think that as a district, that we do all that we can to support, not just students, but our teachers, their families. It does send a little mixed message. And just was wondering, how are we ensuring, you know, that people, when moving forward, you know, are not moving forward out of fear and moving forward because they are thinking they may or may not be able to take care of their families? And I left with no choice. And so I just want us to be, you know, mindful of the way this is kind of across, even though the intention is one that we all stand, you know, in alignment with the investment of thoughts to keep the children safe and schools safe. So I do have our right to, just even in our policy, as Dr. Harris Muhammad, or the board, however we choose to continue to discuss this as this is rolling out because it is being rolled out. And I heard a lot from the community centered around, you know, just ensuring. And I see all the concerns, in my opinion, haven't been kind of listed in the documentation. But I do think that we want to think about just how it's going to go. Thank you.
Mr. Young, anyone else? Ms. White? Followed by Ms. Gibson?
Well, I do have a question, Mr. Cameras, on the vaccination, yes. I agree to that because I have a little one that cannot get a vaccination. And every day, I worry about him when he goes out to parks and recreation, making sure that his mask is up. And I also worry about him knowing that he has to go back in school and just finishing a summer school. And I'm seeing what has happened in the summer school. My question is, why can't it be a two-way, just like the governor's mandate? Why can't it still be mandated for vaccinations? And those who do not get vaccinated have weekly testing? And the testing must show positive?
That is certainly one approach to take. I think the concern with that is it does not raise the vaccination rate, which is what is critical to ensuring that community spread goes down and spread within the building goes down. And so similar to the action that the city of Richmond took, we thought this is the most prudent to most quickly get the vaccination rate up, again, for our students, for our staff, and our community. I do want to note again that medical and religious exemptions with a signature by a physician or a faith leader will be accepted without question. And so I know that is a concern understandably that many have raised. So I do want to reiterate there is that pathway for anybody who has one of those concerns. Again, none of the details of those requests will be debated. It will simply be a matter of, has the form been completed and hasn't been signed by the appropriate individual?
But, Mr. Cameras, my question wasn't answered. You're talking about exemption. I'm talking about a two-way mandate and allowing individuals to actually get tested or be tested. Somehow they have to test that they are positive. You know, some people just have to make a decision. Eventually, they might get tired of testing where they want to get the shot. They may not right now. You mandated tonight, and you're saying you have to be, have a shot by October the 1st. Some, you know, it does, it does come off quite harsh. And that's why I said tonight would be my biggest, my biggest decision. Because I had to do that in the military when I took an anthrax. But I had no choice because I raised my hand. These teachers did not know anything about a mandate coming. They had already signed their contracts. And they're not allowed to redo their contracts. But as of Ms. Lilly said, that that stated, that is in the policy. So to me, we have to come across to our audience, not that we are making them. I know that, yeah, we want the shots up. And I'm against, I mean, I'm against the mandate part a little bit. But the vaccination, yes, I do want all teachers to be able to get it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to state for the record that, you know, I am in support of the mandate. And I recognize that this is not a recommendation that was made lightly. I think it's clear to say that over the past, you know, since the pandemic began in March, this school board has been tasked to do what our teachers are tasked to do, which is to solve the ills of society, you know? I mean, that's, that's where we've landed. And now, as a board, we are tasked to make decisions that go beyond the walls of our building, but extend into communities and homes. I didn't ask to sit in this place, but this is where I am. And so my vote this evening, while, you know, I recognize, you know, all the concerns and reasons for pause, at the end of the day, we have a responsibility to keep our students safe, to keep our staff safe. And by doing so, if we make this choice and it will impact the lives and health of the community at large, I, that's what we'll do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Cameras, do we have a mask mandate currently?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, if not, be mindful that Mrs. Dour made the motion. It was seconded by Mrs. Page. We've had discussion. Are we ready to vote? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
No.
District five, Stephanie Bridger?
Yes.
District six, Dr. Sean Harris-Prom.
Yes.
District seven, Sherford?
Yes.
District eight, Dawn Page?
Yes.
District nine, Cole Jones? Madam Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving forward to 3.02, we see for action, the personnel actions.
We had adjusted the agenda to do the health protocol reopening presentation. So I'm going to ask Ms. Hudasco to go ahead and do that. And I'm incredibly grateful to Dr. Avula and Dr. Veray for sticking around to answer any questions related to this as well. So thank you.
Thank you, 4.01 with the, thank you so much for that reminder, Superintendent Cameras. An update on fall 2021 opening, reopening. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Can folks hear okay? All right. While there are a couple of different pieces to the reopening section on the agenda, I wanted to start by walking through our nine key mitigation strategies that we'll have in place as we move to in-person learning this fall. And I think we began this work with the principle that Dr. Avula shared, and that is that safely returning to in-person learning is our key priority for this year. And then the second piece is that these nine mitigation strategies together, and you've heard the word layered a lot, is what is critical for the safety of our students and the community. So there's nine different strategies. I'll go through each of them. I do want to note that this deck is a summary, and there is a supplemental guidance document that's online that goes into greater depth with each of them. So we won't cover every single thing related to each strategy. The strategies are vaccination, which we've obviously just discussed and voted on, the consistent and correct use of masks, physical distancing, testing, HVAC or ventilation and air quality, hand washing and hand sanitizing, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, daily symptom checking and staying home when you're sick and getting tested. And then finally, contact tracing combined with both quarantine and isolation. And I do want to share that the recommendations that we're putting out this evening to begin the school year are based on current guidance from CDC, VDH, the Richmond City Health Department, and may change as conditions in our city and nation change as well. And so, of course, we will update as needed. Each individual school will also take this division-level guidance and prepare a document for their families with school-specific context that's unique for their own building. So let's, I don't think we'll go over anything else with vaccination, but I think as we've discussed, this is the leading strategy to end the pandemic. So let's move to our second strategy, consistent and correct use of masks. And I think those two words are particularly important as we think about this strategy. So as Dr. Harris Mohammed asked, and our superintendent responded, we do have a mask mandate. Every day, all students, staff, and visitors, and this includes partners, contractors, family members, and volunteers must wear a face mask while on property. That is both inside and outside the building, and that's regardless of vaccination status. This is in schools and in central office buildings. One of the pieces that's especially important, and Dr. Avula shared earlier, is that we have to document that we're wearing the masks correctly. So that means up over the nose and fitting snugly against the side of the face. Ms. White shared something that has sometimes been an issue, and that's that sometimes our students aren't wearing pediatric masks. We have 75,000 masks right now in our warehouse that will be out in schools so that children will have appropriately-sized masks as needed. The pediatric ones are best for the preschool through third grade. While you can wear a face shield over a mask, a face shield, a gator, which are those like cloth things that kind of come up like a turtleneck or bandanas, are not allowed. So again, a mask that fits over the nose and mouth. Masks need to be worn both inside and outside, so this does mean during recess or during a PE class outside. We are not allowing mask breaks. There are only three instances, barring an emergency, of course, when a mask can be removed. When you're taking a nap as a preschooler, when you're eating or drinking, and when playing selected musical instruments. And there is some additional guidance in the guidance document about the wind instruments and how that will work in selected classes. As Jason mentioned before we started, we will provide a cloth mask to every staff member and to every student at the start of school. All of our kids will receive a PPE backpack, which will have cloth mask, hand sanitizer, a magnet that has the wellness symptoms to check for each day, a water bottle, and other things to keep them safe. If anyone needs any replenishing of masks or other PPE, we will have available things for them. The third mitigation strategy is physical distancing. And I think Dr. Avula discussed this earlier when Ms. Dour asked her question. I think the key, as we think about distancing, is it to be maximized to the extent possible. But the guidance is that schools not reduce in-person learning in order to keep a minimum distance requirement. Distance requirements are in place, again, regardless of vaccination status. So between students, we're looking at three feet of distancing to occur to the greatest extent possible. That means we're spacing the desks kind of nose-to-nose, three feet as much as possible. Many schools are putting markers on the floor to help keep the desks in place. We're keeping three to six feet of distancing between students and adults to the greatest extent possible. And then six feet of distancing between adults, hence the new layout of your tables even here this evening. For student desks, we're, whenever we can, we'll be facing them forward in the same direction to minimize face-to-face contact. And students at tables will be distanced to the greatest extent possible. So if you think of a science lab, for example. Dr. Avula talked earlier about the critical need for seating charts. And so every classroom will have a seating chart, which the principal will upload for easy access should contact tracing be necessary. And that will not only be for the seats that kids sit in during most of the day, but when they move to small group or a literacy group or something like that. Our schools are all creating specific arrival, transition, and dismissal guidance that support distancing as well as support cohorting, so keeping together the first-grade class or things like that, again, to minimize unnecessary interactions outside of a group. When eating meals and when playing those certain wind instruments and you have to take the mask off, the minimum distance will be six feet between students. So our schools are thinking creative early right now about what breakfast and lunch look like to ensure that that minimum distance is maintained. And then, given our current transmission rate in the city, there are a couple of other things that we're putting in place now to support with physical distancing. One, we're closing or staggering the use of communal spaces in schools. Two, we are limiting assemblies or other school gatherings, except when essential. And the same with staff meetings or other interactions among teachers. Those should be virtual when possible, otherwise limited. The fourth strategy is testing. I think we talked a bit about that already today. RPS indicated interest in a testing program to the VDH earlier this summer. Funds and programming will become available this fall, and so we're eager to determine what's possible there. Ventilation or HVAC and air quality. Ventilation systems clean the air, decreasing the likelihood that you'll inhale particles that have COVID-19. So we've put in more than 2,100 of the air scrubbers in all classrooms and common areas in schools and central offices. We've added HEPA air filtration systems in all of our buses. We've spent this summer, and of course, this spring, doing HVAC preventative maintenance, upgrading air filters, and completing needed air work, repair work. And at schools where windows are designed to open, weather permitting, at least one window will be open in order to increase ventilation. Number six is hand washing and hand sanitizing. Hand hygiene is one of the most important ways to reduce the spread of COVID-19. In fact, is the primary way that the CDC recommends addressing surface transmission. And surface transmission risk is very low, but the way to address that is through hand washing and hand sanitizing. washing and hand sanitizing. And so because of that, every classroom, as well as all the common areas, will have or have a wall-mounted hand sanitizing station, and there are signs above it so they don't blend into the wall. Our bathrooms will be cleaned and restocked every 90 minutes. Classroom sink supplies are monitored throughout the day. We've installed close to 1,000 touchless paper towel and soap dispensers in all our bathrooms. There's signage in all the bathrooms on proper hand washing, which is soap and water for at least 20 seconds. And there's additional guidance that teachers can share with students. We're, of course, encouraging hand hygiene before and after meals and recess, and we've spent the spring and summer completing all of our bathroom work, from the bathroom blitz, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, et cetera. Number seven is cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities. Again, this is where the CDC recommends, again, that washing your hands, hand sanitizing, is a critical part of addressing anything that might be on the surface. But in addition to that, our custodians are disinfecting our buildings throughout the day. So all of our products are medical-grade and meet the EPA standards for use against COVID-19. Our custodians are disinfecting all high-touch surfaces, so things like doorknobs, stall handles, faucets, every 90 minutes. The lunch tables will be disinfected after each use because the masks will be off. Classroom tables and desks, disinfected every day at the end of the day, and the restrooms, of course, deep cleaned and disinfected at the end of the day. In our preschools, we have COTS now for every student. They are labeled with a student name and are disinfected after each use. And all teachers and students also have access to wipes and spray in the classroom should they wish to use something additionally as desired. Number eight is daily symptom checking. And this is a critical role that individuals can play before they come to school or come to work. So you'll see the symptom checker there on the bottom of the types of COVID symptoms to look for, although these are also just general wellness symptoms. And all students will receive this magnet, as well as a thermometer, to support them in checking each day how they're feeling and if they should come to school. Any staff or student who answers yes to any of the questions shouldn't come. And our guidance also outlines, as Dr. Avula said, a important sick leave policy so that folks don't feel like they need to come in if they're not feeling well. Student absences are excused. Staff members are eligible for leave. We have signs in each school reiterating these symptoms and doing the checks, and our Raptor online login system for visitors and staff has been upgraded to include the questions that visitors and folks answer when they log in. We also have what's called a supportive care space in each school so that if anyone begins to develop symptoms throughout the day, they have an isolated space where they can meet with the school nurse to consider symptoms and determine if they need to go home. And then finally, contact tracing when there is positive cases. I think as Dr. Avula said, even with these layered strategies and careful preparation, we are going to have positive cases throughout the year because COVID exists in our community. But we work very closely with VDH. We meet every day with them. Our colleague Sandra Lee has been leading this for well over a year, doing a great work there, and we'll be continuing that into this upcoming school year, performing case investigation and tracing positives and probable tests of COVID-19. As Dani mentioned, what determines if you're exposed is you're within six feet for 15 minutes or more within a 24-hour period. And if that is the case, you're determined to be a close contact, and then will be asked to quarantine. So as families or staff learn that they may be positive, we ask that they contact us so that we can begin notifications and contact tracing. We will then communicate with any impacted individuals. We'll communicate with those close contacts and provide them with instructions for quarantine that are applicable. Sometimes those vary if the person is vaccinated or not, so it is a case-by-case basis. Again, those seating charts will be critical in helping us do accurate contact tracing, and we'll continue to inform the RPS community about positive cases as they arrive. And again, we'll work with VDH to determine if it's individuals that are quarantined, a class, or even something greater. So those are our nine strategies that layered together will help to keep our school community as safe as possible during this time. And I welcome any questions now that you may have about these, and may defer some answers, of course, to Melissa and Dani as well.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sadasco. Ms. White?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for you. What about the children who are receiving one-on-one services? Will they also have a mask and also a shield since they're, like, reading an intervention and they're so close to the person who's actually instructing them? Will they also have a shield?
We do have face shields available if individuals, either students or staff, wish to wear one in addition to their mask, yes.
And does each school have a COVID team?
The COVID team at each school is led by the, or will be led by, the school nurse. And then our broader school nursing team also has leaders within that who liaise with VDH and individuals in our talent office if there are staff members impacted.
And my next question is, I know you said about the HVAC. And I was looking at this dashboard, and it looks the same as it was almost the last meeting. The HVACs haven't changed, so I'm trying to figure out why they haven't been installed or the percentage hasn't went up.
Let me pull up the dashboard.
We're at 30%?
Sorry. This is not my deck. I just realized I wasn't connected. I'll let Alana speak to the HVAC.
Good evening, Mrs. White. We are currently still working on a couple of projects. All of them will be completed before school starts.
So all the HVAC will be completed?
Absolutely.
Yes?
Just something that I observed after our last meeting, and thank you, Ms. White, so much. But I know that we know on the board, but for others that in this room, and I'm seeing that now going from room to room, office to office, there are one, two, three, four. What's the name of the systems?
Air scrubbers.
Can you speak up?
Hospital-grade air scrubbers, and every classroom has one, and common areas like this have multiple. And those are in all schools and central office buildings.
I noticed that today in the meeting in the school and also in City Hall as well. So just to point it out so people will know. And then the last meeting that we had for vacant properties, they were in that room.
Yes, we've installed close to 2,500.
Right. All right, we have some questions, Mr. Young. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Sadasco. I just have a few questions. Was there any work done on windows recently? I know that some of our schools, you know, the windows were in pretty bad shape, and you know, I heard from some principals about that. Has there been any work on windows and maybe schools that weren't able to open before can open now?
Yes, I'll let Alana speak to details, but yes.
Good evening, Ms. Rizzi. We have not repaired all windows that aren't able to open, but if a building has windows that are able to open, meaning it was built with windows meant to open, because we do have some schools who are not, there is at least one window in each classroom that can open.
Okay, thank you. This seems like a lot of work for custodians. Are we fully staffed now?
I think we're at 98%.
Correct. We are, well, you know, we have resignations and hiring every week. We interview for custodians every week. I don't know the exact number, but we're 90-something percent, and we will continue to interview and hire. It is a lot of work. We have worked very hard. Our, excuse me, facilities team has worked to create custodial schedules to ensure that we have mapped out the day and ensure that everything can get done. And, you know, we've made sure that the custodians are fully trained. The equipment that they have is more effective, so they can do things quicker than what they were doing previously. So the custodial team has been working really hard on trainings, et cetera. Yes, it is a lot of work, but we are prepared to do it.
Thank you, I appreciate them for that. Let's see, bus drivers, you know, I read a story, I don't know how true it is, that Chesterfield is actually asking people to drive their kids to school because of, you know, they don't have enough bus drivers, or how are we doing with that?
We do have vacancies. We have been doing a pretty good job at hiring, but at the same time, while we're hiring, we've also had people who have resigned. We are currently about 19 vacancies for bus drivers, and that is also something we continue to actively recruit and hire for.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question comes from parents. They have expressed interest in maybe having some kind of centralized COVID-related dashboard where parents could go and get information about what's happening with RPS and, you know, COVID-related issues, and a centralized place to get information about COVID. Is there a way to do that on our website?
Yes, there is. And as we enter the new school year, we're prepared to share information more comprehensively than just the daily directs, but something that helps people see it in the aggregate.
Yeah, something easy to read.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Yes, thank you. So Ms. Gonzalez, this goes back to questions that my colleague, Ms. White and Ms. Burke had. So with the safety dashboard, and I just want to confirm, so the items to be completed that's less than 50%, like the mechanical work, HVAC improvement, and safety signage, so all of these tasks will be completed before the start of school?
Correct. They all will be completed before the start of school. The safety signage is all being delivered currently as we speak, so every school does not have it up right now, but they will by the end of the week. And then, as I said earlier, there are still some HVAC jobs that are not completed but are actively being worked on and will be completed. I'm not sure which other items.
The mechanical work?
There may be a little mechanical work left in bathrooms, but I will have to double-check that number because I can't recall off the top of my head. But I commit that every single thing will be completed before school starts.
And so the board will receive a status update on the completion?
Thank you, certainly.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, Ms. Dorr? Ms. Jones, then Ms. Dorr. Okay, Ms. Jones, I need to stop getting ahead of you, forgive me.
Thank you, Ms. Sadasco. My question was related to, my question was related to, in the presentation, where it says each school will also create a health safety plan that reflects the given context of their building.
Yes.
And will share the information with families prior to school. So I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
One, has this already been communicated to principals? Two, who's helping them to create these plans? Three, how, if every school is going to have a different plan, how will that reflect in terms of the mitigation strategies and emergencies with the schools that each school is kind of getting a different plan?
Great question. So yes, two weeks ago, we shared this requirement with principals with a version of the guidance that we posted last week to Board Doc, so they have been working on it. We divided the guidance into two parts. One part was due last Wednesday. The second part is due this Wednesday. They've been working together, not only with each other as thought partners, but with our principal directors who serve as their immediate supervisors, as well as the leadership team and those who've been working, the nurses and others, on this for the last year as thought partners. When we received then all the plans, we're reviewing those together to make sure we're able to support them with any requested needs, make sure it is fully aligned with the guidance that we've put out today. And then we'll just have a, when I say that everyone will have the plan, there will be a standardized format by which they'll share it with families. So, for example, there might be a slide for families about masks, which shares at a high level what's the division guidance on masks. And then that specific school might then offer school-specific context, like, if you forget your mask, come by the main office, or we'll have it outside door five, or something like that that feels very specific. There might be other things related to lunch that are unique to one campus, based on their size, that may not work in another campus. So they'll be just sharing some of those very school-specific things, but it will all be anchored in this guidance.
So being that we know that with the schools having individual plans, we do know if something happens, nine times out of 10, they're going to look to the district as a whole.
Sure.
So what's the plan around that, just so that when that does, if it does come down to pipe, we're able to not look like we don't know what school is telling parents what and we are not kind of like all over the place? I think, you know, that would be helpful, like you said, a standardized document, but then also a go-to, because sometimes the schools are figuring it out as it happens as well. And I think we have, you know, a lot of schools that we don't want to, well, I have a child at this school and then my child goes to this school, and so they said this over here. And so if I'm quarant, you know, some of those issues and concerns that we've been seeing, just about parents having different students at different schools and what the strategies and processes are, you know, as it relates.
Yep. No, let me reiterate again, just so it's clear to everyone. The strategies are consistent. So the nine mitigation strategies will not vary, and when there are processes or protocols, so for example, around quarantine, those will not vary. The things that will maybe, or things like, you will have an air scrubber in the classroom, that's not going to vary. There are just a couple of things that might vary, things like, where would you pick up a mask if you don't have one? Where is the supportive care space in our school? Is it next to the nurses' suite, or is it in this other room? Some things like that, but generally, 90% of the time, this is the guidance. It's just to kind of help families see how it might work in this context.
Thank you. And will this, will the non-mitigation strategies, I'm sorry, will that also be shared with all the families?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I believe it was shared today in the RPS Direct link, not today. It will be tomorrow in the RPS Direct as well, and up on our website. We just wanted to wait until the board voted on the vaccine to make a slight modification then for the first bullet under the first strategy, and then now we're ready to post. Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Dorr?
Hi, thank you for this. I'm wondering about sick leave. And if you could talk about, point me in the direction of where I can read more about that, and then also, like, some of the nuances about sick leave, like, what if someone's child has COVID, et cetera?
Yep. Sandra, would you mind clicking on the guidelines there and moving to page 12 of 17? So Appendix D in the Health and Safety Guidance is specific to your question, guidance for sick leave. Yes?
Can you just query the board and the public to respond to?
Absolutely. So the deck that we just went over was a summary deck, which pulled out some of the key ideas for each of the nine strategies. This document provides even greater detail on each of the strategies, as well as has appendices A through G, which provide additional detail. So for example, I had shared that there was specific guidance related to select wind instruments in some music classes. That's Appendix A. Or here, Appendix D is the guidance for staff sick leave. So there is drill down in for So there is drill-down information on a variety of things that are referenced throughout the guidance document. So you'll see here we have four different buckets related to leave, which get at some of the things that you mentioned, Liz. The first is if you have been advised to be tested, or if you are experiencing symptoms, you'll get admin leave with pay, one to three days. If you have been quarantined, you'll get admin leave with pay, ten days. If you answer yes to those wellness questions that we talked about, you'll take sick leave. If you have a child who has been quarantined or tested positive, you will get admin leave with pay as needed.
You have another question?
Just a quick follow-up to that.
Yes.
I assume that our sick leave day, paid sick leave is going to be a budget increase year over year. And I'm wondering, are we using stimulus funds for that, or is that, okay, is that accounted for?
Well, the sick leave in of itself is budget-neutral because it's just us paying you what we would have normally paid. What potentially adds cost is substitutes. And yes, we have added that in to our federal stimulus dollars, yes.
You're done? Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I, you know, I want to essentially, you know, I sent an email stating my concerned, and I want to speak now essentially, you know, continuing on that, which is truly, I am imploring the administration and this body to consider reopening and allowing parents now to opt-in into virtual school. I, I believe it is incredibly irrational that we have sat here this evening and we asked and reminded public speakers to be distanced at six feet apart when we have no ability to be able to do that across the board, in our classrooms, on our buses, and even at three feet. I, I think that it is unreasonable that we're in the middle of a global pandemic that is wildly unpredictable. That's why it's a pandemic. And yet we expected our parents and families to make a decision about in-person education five months before the start of the school year. It's irrational. I, and then it's like, on, on top of all that, I find it truly absurd that we've put the onus of responsibility onto families in that way. And now we have families begging for answers to questions and clarity weeks before the start of the school year. Yes, we are going to layer the mitigation strategies, but we know that we cannot have folks crowded in an indoor room in buildings that are eighty years old, and despite whatever methods we're going to do, at the end of the day, are not going to be as well-ventilated as many other spaces. So I ask that we allow parents and families to reassess, given the reality that we have in this city today, so that we are allowing a more responsible, empathetic approach. I mean, we can't say we're reopening with love if we force people to make a decision five months ago that has nothing to do with where we are today with this pandemic. Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones? Ms. Jones, please proceed.
Yeah, respectfully, respectfully.
Yeah.
I know that we've been talking about returning to school. We've talked about year-round school. We've talked about reopening. We've talked about summer school. We've talked about changing the time. So I do feel that we have been planning to return to school. And granted, we didn't know we would be where we are today, but I do think, and I want to be clear for the public that, you know, the administration has been working to ensure that students get back to school, and I believe in it. I could be wrong, but I believe that part of that was also the virtual option. And I know now that we are here, so I'd like to really hear from the superintendent, if possible, what, what has prompted the inability, I guess, to allow for virtual? Because again, we have been planning, and we knew then that we were still, granted, the numbers were going down, but we were still mandated masks. We were talking about the social distancing. We've been talking about the HEPA filtration. We've been talking about the buses. We've been talking about everything. And so I don't want to allude to the fact that we're not allowing folks to come virtual as if this is something, you know, we're just dropping. So I would like to hear a little bit more about that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you for the question as well, Ms. Gibson. First, just a couple of context-setting notes. We have actually the most robust virtual program that I'm aware of in all of central Virginia, perhaps beyond that. We have approximately two thousand RPS students. So just under ten percent of our student body is currently today signed up, enrolled, and ready to go for virtual when we open on September eighth. I have received many of the same emails from families that I know you have received asking us to open it for further students. And I would be thrilled to be able to do so. The reality is, at this point in the year, if we were to do that, we would not be able to staff the program. And quite frankly, the only way we would end up staffing the program is by pulling teachers out of our in-person instruction, which would have a cascading effect for the other ninety percent of our students. And so, as superintendent and as a father, I have deep empathy for families that are feeling great anxiety right now. There's an operational limit to what we can actually achieve and also not cause even greater harm for a much larger group of students. Fortunately, the Commonwealth of Virginia has a virtual option that any resident of Virginia can access, and it is free. And so that is what we have been directing families towards if they are uncomfortable bringing their children back and they have not yet signed up for virtual under the initial deadline. And I think we are blessed to be able to have that as a backstop option. I am hopeful and prayerful that once the vaccine is approved for children as young as five years old, as Dr. Avula noted, hopefully, fully by September or October, we will be able to bring a lot of those families back into RPS. They can all come back in person at any time. I want to make sure I'm super clear on that, at any time. And we will welcome them back gladly. It's why, even with our own virtual program, we made it clear with the teachers for that program that one of the conditions of serving in a virtual role is that you could be called back in person at any time, so that we can meet the needs of in-person instruction. Again, I, I have enormous empathy for those with, with fear about sending their children back. And would not pressure anybody to make the decision that's not right for their family. But fortunately, there is another virtual option through the state-run program. I will share that information in my RPS Direct tomorrow and broadly for any family that would like to access that. As it stands, we have to put all of our energy into the two thousand virtual kids who have already signed up, and the other twenty-plus thousand students who will be in person when we reopen on September eighth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank my colleague, Ms. Jones, for bringing up those key points.
Ms. Page, I'm not sure if folks can hear you.
Can you hear me now? Thank you. Now, I just said that I want to thank my colleague, Ms. Jones, for bringing up those key points, because the issue that we are dealing with is not unique to Richmond. So my question to the superintendent, have you heard feedback from the surrounding localities? We're dealing with the same issue now. The cases have increased. A lot of parents have changed their mind. You know, they'd rather go virtual versus in-person. And I have another question after this one.
Yes, I think this is something that school systems across America are grappling with. I do know, I don't know the exact number, but some of our colleagues in the region capped their virtual program at much lower numbers, much earlier in the spring. And so, again, I don't have those at my fingertips, but I'm glad to identify the information and share that with you.
Okay. So my other question, how are we getting the information out, the safety plan, to parents who don't have access to the internet? Because I heard a parent share the concerns about the internet connection.
Yep. And so in addition to it certainly being available web-based, this is something that all of our schools will be sharing in their back-to-school events. Many schools are hosting orientations for students, have back-to-school materials and things like that. So not only will those be shared as we lead up to school, but this plan and the specifics for that school, as well as our division-level guidance, will be shared throughout the first weeks of school as well, as families are welcoming students back.
So have we also considered our partners to have that information hard copy available to our parents as well as a reinforcement?
Yes. And we wanted to share the complete guidance with the board and the public tonight, but a more family-friendly version is being produced, as well as a video, which we already recorded because we know not everyone has the time to read everything. So we'll blast that out. It will be shared in hard copy through all of our family liaisons, through the city's community ambassadors, and all of the RRHA communities. We will be doing spots on radio and on television. We will be sharing this, quite frankly, every single day in every outlet we possibly have from now through, frankly, through September.
Thank you.
I thought maybe I was receiving a gift. I was going to take it, but I wanted to, I just wanted to be clear on what the gift was, right?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a quick question. Teachers who were, or who moved from the classroom to the virtual program, are these now permanent assignments, or how is that working? I just have a question about that.
It's, it's considered the same as any transfer. So transferring from one elementary school to another, transferring from your elementary school to virtual. So they're still...
And they're going to be long-term, or?
Um, I think we need to wait and see what the pandemic holds for us. I mean, ideally, in the future, we would be fully back in person, although certainly there are some students...
And then they'd be reassigned or...
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you, Ms. Haddasco. I know there is a, a video has a standard in for students' absences.
Yes.
And would that be suspended, that, I guess, that rule? Because you could get a child that's, you know, has to be, has COVID and has to be several times, and fifteen days or fourteen days have been and gone. What, what's going to happen with that?
Yep. So two different situations. All student absences related to illness are excused. Now, an excused absence, however, does not, or does still count towards chronic absenteeism, but it wouldn't trigger attendance issues within the division. So if a student is actually sick and is therefore not engaged academically, then they would be marked sick, excused. If a child is quarantined but not sick, but they had a possible exposure, then work will be provided for them and sent home during the period of their quarantine.
And my next question is, will any of our schools be considered as being overcrowded? And I know that, I'm sure the, some of us board members, we received the email about a school that didn't have enough parking, but got a lot of teachers. Will that be taken care of?
Uh, yes. None of our schools are exceeding projected capacity, and the school in question has ample parking spaces for all of their staff.
You know what, you know what school I'm talking about, right?
Yes, Alana County.
Oh, okay.
It does, yep, yep.
Okay. I was like, and my other question was, I forgot it now. I forgot.
I'm here all night.
That's okay. Go ahead. Oh, I know, I have it. So is, I, I was listening to my colleagues about reopening the virtue. And I know I have a little special situation. I know most of the cameras, I think it came to you. What about our students that, um, special needs, and they can't wear the mask? And now their mother wants them to go into virtue, or the doctor wants them to go into virtue? At times, their mom had signed up, wanted them to come to school. But now since the COVID, the Delta is here now, the doctor has recommended that they do virtue. So what type of virtue would those students do?
Yep. I want to kind of bifurcate your question with two responses. The first is, we do recognize that there are some unique circumstances for students with special needs where tolerating a mask might be challenging. And we have special guidance for those students that the school nurse can work with them on. So if, if a family does want to continue to come in person, but their child may not tolerate a mask that looks like this all day, we have some options for them. And I think I'm in touch with the family specifically that you're speaking of. Conversely, however, if they decide that virtual is the best option for their family, special education services, as dictated by an IEP, are legally required, and those would be provided in that virtual format.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I'm, I'm going to close it right now.
That's okay.
But just a quick question, not to add any more work to your plate, but is it possible, we've mentioned that we have two thousand students in virtual, to just maybe even cut out to families what we've learned, you know, what we're doing different this, you know, once school opens back up? We heard a lot about students not being able to access through the Wi-Fi and all that. Just to get the community, you know, engaged as well to see that virtual is actually working, and so those who will be in it, they won't, you know, experience the same challenges that they experienced the last time. Of course, we can't guarantee it, but I was just thinking if we could maybe share some of that as well with the community.
Absolutely. We're doing so. We have a principal of our virtual academy, and she puts out a daily, I believe, newsletter to all two thousand families, just keeping them abreast of what the schedule will look like, interactions. I do want to note that the virtual programming is diff... I do want to note that the virtual programming is different based on grade level. So the preschool through 5th grade is run by RPS, and I think we'll probably have a little bit more opportunity to reflect on some of those lessons learned. The 6th through 12th is run through Virtual Virginia, which is a state-operated program. We, however, in our virtual academy, have mentors that are paired with all of the students at the secondary level to help sort of serve as a liaison and ensure they have a successful experience.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michelle, just a real quick question in regards to lunch. And do we anticipate at some of our campuses that students will need to eat in their classroom and specifically at secondary level? What does that mean for our teachers and specifically those teachers that should have had an encumbered lunch?
Yep. It absolutely means that we're going to be thinking creatively about multiple spaces. Because while a first step for principals might be to look at their schedule and see if there's different ways to stagger lunch or flip lunch recess or things like that, schools are going to need to use different spaces. Now, that may not always be the classroom. So for example, schools might be looking at using the gym. And so, we're first encouraging schools to look at larger communal spaces like that, which still could have cohorting or potting, because of course, that does reduce supervisory lift. But in some instances, we may need to be eating in classrooms as well. And so, we'll be looking at other available staff who can help provide support during that time. Say again? Am I good? I am done, yes.
The reason I'm asking is I want to make sure. Colleagues, just as a reminder, Ms. Hadasco, thank you so very much. And we thank Dr. Vula and his deputy Ms. Dr. Bay.
Bray.
Okay.
Yes.
We thank you all for staying this evening as well. Colleagues, let's be mindful, it's after 9 o'clock and we're just on Section 3, and we probably will, we do go into close tonight. So when we get to the 10 o'clock mark, I will ask about our continuing on or whether to reschedule. Be mindful that our next meeting is not until September 13th. So if we're finished with that section of the reopening and the health piece, we can move on to our next item, which is 3.02 Personnel, Ms. Lee. Thank you all so much. Thank you all, Dr. Vula. Thank you, Doctor. Appreciate you all. See you soon.
Good evening. The talent office is bringing forth the following personnel actions for your consideration tonight. The nomination of 74 employees, the change of contract of 102 employees, the resignation of 17 employees, the retirement of five employees, the rescission of employment of two employees, the name change of two employees, and the death of one employee. Thank you.
You have heard the report from our HR person. Is there a motion to... All right, there's a question on the floor first, Dr. Harris Mohammed.
I actually have a motion.
Thank you, dear.
I move that we accept the human resources agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved out by Dr. Harris Mohammed to receive the report, and it was seconded by, I heard two voices. Oh, they're gonna say which one. Okay, it was seconded by Ms. Jones and Ms. Page. Any questions? Discussion? Mrs. White?
I just got a question, Ms. Lee. For retirement, what does the, I was looking at the retirement, what type of recognition is given to retirees?
Yes, ma'am. At the end of the school year, we do recognize retirees. This year, due to the virtual school year, we did a recognition online for the retirees, and we will be recognizing the retirees throughout the year.
Do they receive a certificate or a pen based on the number of years?
There is a certificate as well as a gift that we send out from the talent office.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, this year it was a clock.
I think it was a clock. Yeah, it was on the RPS Direct. Any other questions or discussion? All right, we're ready to vote on the personnel report. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Yes. Abstain.
District 4, Jonathan Young.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Thank you so very much, and thank you, Ms. Lee. All right, the next item on number 3.03 should be received for appointment. School Board Clerk upon the recommendation of the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I officially bring forth Patrice Richardson as our nominee to serve as the clerk of the Richmond City School Board.
Would you be so kind as to stand, Mrs., before we make our vote this afternoon, so they all can see? We've seen you virtually, Ms. Patrice Richardson. Colleagues, this is Ms. Richardson, and now is our opportunity to have that done. Motion in order to move forward. You can be seated. Thank you. I just wanted them to see you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make the motion.
Please, thank you.
I move that we accept the recommendation of our clerk as presented by the superintendent.
Second. It's been moved by Dr. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Ms. Page to receive Mrs. Patrice Richardson as our new clerk for the School Board of the City of Richmond, Richmond Public Schools. Any discussion? Mr. Young?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to take a moment to convey gratitude, first and foremost, to Michelle Hadasco, or Chief of Staff, for leading a really outstanding search process, and two, to all my colleagues who sat in on so many interviews, and then three, to Ms. Richardson for agreeing to join the team. Really excited to work with you and collaborate. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, and I concur. Are we ready to vote? Madam Clerk? We're gonna thank you when this part is done, Madam Interim Clerk. Say what? You're not quite gone completely yet, okay? We needed that. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Yes. Well, unanimously, Mrs., may I be so kind, this is what we do when we clap in our board meetings. Hallelujah. But thank you so very much. We welcome you here, and you are in good, good hands with an awesome group of persons to work with, so we thank you so very much. Here we are. And as Mr. Young stated, Ms. Hadasco, you were just super in terms of just orchestrating that entire process. Now, to our interim clerk, Ms. Adeline Clark, who came out of retirement, woo-hoo! She has been just awesome and thinsome, and I'm glad that she's agreed to stay on for a little while to, because there's some things, Mrs. Richardson, as you well know, people know behind the scenes, and we're just so delighted to have that continued. But that's what we do in Richmond Public Schools. That's the way we are. We practice love, and I'm sure you've read our strategic plan, Dreams for RPS. So we lead with love, serve with love, and we teach with love. So again, welcome to RPS, Ms. Clark. We hold you personally accountable. Thank you so very much. All right, if we can move along to the next item on the agenda. Oh, okay, it is behind me. I don't have it in front of me. So the next item is 3.04, Received for Second Read and Action, New Policy and Policy Revisions Based on Virginia General Assembly Action. And that is given by...
Ms. Burke, that's me.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was looking around.
That's okay. Good evening, board members. Again, basically, what we have in front of you is the second read of the policy revision I will say that the only, there were no changes or revisions suggested from any members. I will say that due to changes that were made in the recent special session of the General Assembly, Policy 7-3.6 with respect to staff time schedules is pulled from the policy revision policy deck at this point because there were some tweaks that were made in the special session in August that no longer require the changes to the overtime piece of the staff time schedule policy. So with the exception of 7-3.6, the policies presented before you are in the same revision state, if you will, as was presented in the first redraft and require approval at this time.
Thank you so very much. Can we get a motion, Ms. Page?
Yes. I move that we accept the new policy and the policy revisions based on Virginia General Assembly Action.
Second. Thank you. It was moved by Ms. Page and seconded by Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. To receive the Virginia General Assembly Action Policy, new policy as listed. Any questions? Ms. Doerr?
Hi, sorry, I was hoping to catch you before the motion. I wanted to commend the administration on this policy revisions, and I sent the draft to the Virginia Council on LGBTQ+. And I heard back from them late this afternoon, or else I would have sent my revisions in on time, or maybe not. But they said that, in general, this was excellent. However, had one tweak that I'm hoping we can add if Ms. Page is willing to entertain this as part of her motion, and that's on Policy 8-1-10, Treatment of Transgender Students. Under Student Privacy, Paragraph 2 reads, "In addition to adhering to all legal standards of confidentiality, school personnel shall treat information related to a student's gender identity as being particularly sensitive, shall not disclose it to other students and to other parents, and shall only disclose to school personnel with a legitimate educational interest." And the suggestion is to add the following sentence at the end of that paragraph. "If a student is not ready or able to safely share with their family about their gender identity, this should be respected."
So Mrs., it's on the floor now that we amend the motion as listed? Is that correct, Ms. Lilly?
I'm trying to follow. Ms. Doerr, are you trying to add to...
So my suggestion is that if, rather than having to go through a process where we amend the resolution, if Ms. Page is amenable to adding that to her resolution, then we would just...
Yes.
And that the, Ms. Lilly, I can send you the exact sentence, but the, the, under the, it would be to add one sentence in Policy 8-1.10, Student Privacy, Paragraph 2, the final sentence, and I'll send you the exact language, but it says, the last sentence would be, that would be added. "If a student is not ready or able to safely share with their family about their gender identity, this should be respected."
So we have on the docket at this time, Mrs. Page's...
Yes, I accept the amendment.
And is it still seconded by Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Sure.
Okey-dokey. Then we'll move forward on that. Are we ready to, any questions? Discussion? Question? Ms. White?
My question also is on 8.1, I mean, 10. Since this has been a hot issue for a lot of schools, what is the Richmond Public Schools' plans on, for the restrooms? I know a lot of schools have, and it's been in the news for that, this particular...
I'm gonna ask Ms. Q. Hadasco to come up and share on that one.
And while she's coming, may I add that this policy is model, this is based off of the model policy for the state, the state-developed model policies for this particular topic. And so, this is, this language is verbatim from the state's language, and it does talk about access to facilities on the second page of that policy.
So the last thing that you...
I said the access to facilities, including restrooms, is included in the policy draft that's presented in front of you.
Yes, in the policy, but what I'm saying, what are we doing as a whole?
Okay, okay.
As far as restrooms, are we putting a separate restroom or...
Okay, well, I'll...
In the facility, so whatever.
Yeah. From, for starters, with the adoption of this policy, we do have single-stall, gender-neutral bathrooms available in all our buildings, and students and families will be made aware of that. We are now pulling together, with the board's adoption of this policy, a working group so that we can begin to thoughtfully consider, with feedback, what the appropriate signage would be on those bathrooms. Right now, they just simply show two images, but there may be some more inclusive signage that we want to consider moving forward. At this point, though, we are not looking at redoing full bathrooms in any building for this upcoming year. It would be focusing on single-stall bathrooms in this Phase 1.
Thank you.
Then we're ready to vote. Madam Interim Clerk?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much. Moving forward to 3.05, Received for Action, Board Travel and District Activity Requests.
I have two action funding request forms. Both of them are presented, I show over. One is for the Plymouth Richmond and Virginia Free Farm. And it is, I have a dream festival, and all of Richmonders inspiration and information to help them dream about their future during this time of significant social change. The date, oh, sorry. The date, location, and time of the program is August 28, 2021, at the Martin Luther King Unity Park. It is from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And the program is directed toward RPS students and the RPS students and their community. And the funding request is sent... And the funding request is an amount of $250. The second request is for the Bright Minds Chess Club, Bright Minds RDA Chess Training and Tournament. And the dates of the program is August 16 through 27. It is from 11:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. And students will participate in a chess tournament, as well as be taught disciplines, analytical skills, moves, and strategies of chess. And this request is for $350.
Thank you so very much. You've heard the two requests. Any questions or discussion? Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. I have a request that I did submit late in the evening, and I do apologize, but it is for, I have a dream festival, the same one that Ms. Burke shared first, on August 28, and the amount of $250 also. And I do want to be transparent, I did submit that this evening. I failed to recall that we do not have another meeting before that event. So I sincerely apologize for submitting that late, colleagues.
All right, thank you very much. So we have two on the table at this time, so since we have that in the system, and tomorrow when I go downtown, if it's approved tonight, I'll sign off on it as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. So, any discussion regarding those two requests? If not, we're ready to vote. Madam interim clerk?
District 1, Ms. Matt Doerr.
Yes.
I'm sorry, did we, did we have a motion?
Did somebody make the motion?
I can make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, because I had a question.
I'm thinking that, that's why you raised your hand.
That's all right. I would like to make the motion. I move that we accept the district activity requests as presented by interim clerk.
Second.
Excellent. Thank you all. Dr. Harris Mohammed made the motion. Ms. Doerr seconded that we receive the request for funding. Are we ready to vote now? All right, Madam interim clerk?
District 1, Ms. Matt Doerr.
Yes.
District 2, Mariah White.
Yes.
District 3, Amy Gibson.
Yes.
District 4, Jonathan Young.
I'm staying.
District 5, Stephanie Rizzi.
Yes.
District 6, Dr. Shonda Harris Mohammed.
Yes.
District 7, Cheryl Burke.
Yes.
District 8, Dawn Page.
Yes.
District 9, Nicole Jones.
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passed, eight to one.
Thank you so very much. Next item we added, 3.06, per Mrs. Liz Doerr's motion on open enrollment. Correct? Didn't we add, didn't that what you added, 3.0?
Yes.
Everybody said, uh-uh. Would you please proceed?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I asked for a quick discussion regarding open enrollment policy change that I'm hoping we make permanent when we revisit open enrollment as a board. However, this policy change, I think, is a small benefit to our teachers and staff, and something nice that we can do for them this year, which is to allow teachers that teach at a certain school to have their child also attend that school, so long as they live in the city. And so, to that end, I'd like to make a motion to temporarily suspend Open Enrollment Policy 8.02.6, to allow teachers and staff to enroll their children at an out-of-zone school, provided that the teacher or staff member also works at that school. Oh, sorry.
Madam Chair, I would second that.
It's been moved by Mrs. Doerr and seconded by Mr. Young, that we add, excuse me, we change our policy and permit faculty and staff persons that work within their schools to permit their children to attend, per them being in Richmond residence, and the parents work there in that school. Is there any discussion, any questions?
I got a question.
Mrs. Young? Mrs., excuse me, Ms. White?
I did that one time before.
This is second time, doesn't it?
I'm already married.
I'm sorry.
I'm already married.
It's time to eat.
Yeah, it is. I can't even stop laughing. My question is, because, my question is, wouldn't they have to follow the same guidelines as open enrollment as anyone else? That's what's my question. They would have to be accepted, do the application. Is that right, Mr. Camus? I'm hearing her saying they open enrollment. But sometimes I know you can get caught, caught up, and you may not be accepted where your parent may be actually working.
So, I hesitate to speak for Ms. Doerr, but I believe what she is proposing is that one would not need to go through the open enrollment process if you were a teacher at a school. By virtue of your employment at the school, your child would be able to go to that school. I do want to note, while I am supportive of this policy, my recommendation to the board is to effectuate it when we address a whole host of open enrollment policies, which will occur at the end of September, early October, based upon the work of the Enrollment Equity Commission. My concern about making this change, basically 15 business days before to the start of the school year, is that it would cause some likely significant roster changes. There are some equity issues to be considered in terms of who's able to access this at this point in the year. And there may also be some funding implications in terms of class size reduction money. I do want to be clear, I'm supportive of the idea. I think it's something that we should pursue. I just think we should do it as part of a larger package of reforms that we will address as a body this fall.
Do it at one time.
Thank you. I see Mrs. Page's hand. Ms. Page?
Yes, thank you. I too, I am supportive of this change, but I have a question. So, when we have a family that have, they have gone through open enrollment, and they are like first on a waiting list, how would that impact them if a teacher has a child that may, that may bump their open enrollment student out of that school? And I totally agree, it could be an equity issue. So we really do need to look at this. Because if you have gone through the process of open enrollment, and you find out that you're number one on the list, but you may get bumped. Yes. So again, I just wanted to be clear. I'm supportive, but we have to be fair and consistent.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Dr. Harris Mohammed?
Yes, ma'am. I too agree with the superintendent, that I think we need to tackle this when we tackle the task of looking at the entire policy and revamping with the team to make sure that we are not creating loopholes of inequities. And so, I am supportive of what has been presented by Ms. Doerr. I would like for us to wait when, at such time, we are reviewing that entire process. So we can change the language, or would have, whatever we need to do, but I would like for us to wait. Second, we are a couple of weeks out of school, and it will create, it can create, an issue when our teachers have a child that wants to attend their school, and it's a hot, not, I shouldn't say a hot, but it's a popular enrollment, open enrollment school, if you will. And so, that is going to create some concerns. So, I support the superintendent's recommendation to wait.
Thank you. Mr. Young, anyone else? All right, Mr. Superintendent? Ms. Lilly, Alan Terny?
I received the clarification that I needed. I was wondering if this was going to be a temporary, or a down-the-road, a policy change, but you, I got your email. The motion, and I apologize if you said this, was for just the 2021, 2022 school year. So that would not, she's asking to temporarily suspend the policy at this fiscal year. I was wondering whether or not it needed to be a policy change now, or whether it was just a suspension, and I didn't, I may have missed what she said earlier.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Ms. Doerr?
Yeah, so, my hope was that, I think all my colleagues flagged really good items, and I look forward to continuing the conversation in the fall. My hope was that we could do a temporary suspension tonight, because the start of school is happening in September. It seems like the appetite of the board is to delay that conversation until September 12, you know, whenever we talk about it next, which I think is, is fair, and I, I think that's probably best practice. I wanted to try, because I had heard from several teachers that this was a big issue, and I know it's a hard year for teachers coming back to school, and I thought it would be just a nice little thing that we could do. I think you all have flagged really important issues that we need to think through more clearly, so I'll withdraw my, happily withdraw my resolution.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda. My computer went out. So now we're back to 4.0, correct? 4.02, because my, that's why I need the hard copy in front of me. Ms. Gibson?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Given that we are at 10 o'clock at night, and this discussion regarding SROs merits more than five minutes, I would ask that we continue our meeting and continue with these, the remaining agenda items at our, at our next meeting. I am open to scheduling another meeting, in addition to the meeting on the 16th, if there's interest in that amongst my colleagues, to have these conversations sooner rather than later. Thank you.
You mean before the 13th? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, you said 16th, I was going to say that's tonight. Okay, so it's on the floor, colleagues, that, which would be right, we do have quite a few things to address, because of the hour being 10 o'clock, almost 10 o'clock, six minutes to go. The items left are 4.02, SRO program, 4.03, student code, which is a first read, and the board retreat. So, we, MOU the other items, and then we have to go into close.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no objection to Ms. Gibson's proposal. One note, I do think it is important that the board weighs in on the George with proposal if the administration is going to meet the August 31st deadline for submission of the RFP. So, I would request that we try to address that.
Did you make that a motion, Ms. Gibson? Did you make that a motion? That was point of discussion.
Yes, I've motioned that we, that we continue the meeting.
Very good. And which technically, we don't think we have to have a motion for that, do we? We don't have to have a motion for that, just that we're in agreement. Thank you so much. Are we in agreement to continue to move forward?
I'm in agreement to move forward.
All right, thank you so very much. Next item on the agenda is 4.02, receive an update and recommendation on School Resource Officer SRO program.
I'm sorry, I took Ms. Gibson's recommendation to mean that we would delay those items? It could be incorrect, I just wanted to check.
Yes, continuing means that it moves. We continue later, yes. That's my motion. I mean, we're at, it's 9:56 this evening.
I'm sorry, I did not understand it that way. My apologies.
Nor did I, because, all right, we can have a point of discussion, which I thought this is what it was, to continue on into the meeting. However, you're made, if you're making a motion, we need to revisit. So, would you be so kind, if you're making a motion, to state which items you're asking that we put off until the September 13th date?
I, I motion that we continue the remaining agenda items on this evening's agenda to our next meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
I have a question.
I haven't got that yet. Is there a question?
Yes, ma'am. Please, thank you, Madam Chair. Does that include the update on George with construction that Mr. Camus was, he has information that we need to discuss so we can move forward? I'm just trying to understand, is that...
Her motion means everything, at this point on.
So, for, just from my perspective, the, the administration has all of the information that they need in order to be able to proceed with the, with the RFP. So, that's, that's my, you know, that's my perception on that.
All right, I don't know who was first. Who was first? All right, let's, thank you, Mr. Young. Mrs. Gibson has pulled on the floor that we stop the meeting now at 10 o'clock, and be mindful that we must go into close. Is that correct, Ms. Lilly? Is the gentleman, she stepped out? Okay. All right, so the motion is that we, from 4.02 henceforth, moving forward, that we stop our, our meeting at this point for tonight. I need a second to move forward. Then we'll move at a point of discussion. Is there a second to the motion of stopping now and pick up with the remaining of the items listed at another meeting? Is there a second? Is there a second to move, stop now? Is there a second? If not, the motion fails. Is there consensus in terms of continuing with the agenda as listed at this time? Uh-uh. That's not what I said. That's not what I said. Thank you, that's not what I said. What I asked was, can we move on? Ms. Jones?
I just had a question relative to, I know sometimes we'll get to this point and we'll move agenda items to the next meeting, and so, you know, just shut the whole meeting down. Can we discuss what's time-sensitive, and what needs to be discussed in these last three minutes before we move into close, and maybe move some of the other agenda items to the next meeting?
Thank you, Mrs. Thank you so much. Be mindful what's listed, School Resource Officers, George with, the construction piece, the code of ethics, all of that needs to be done before, since we don't meet until the, the board retreat, that should be no more than two minutes. The MOU, I don't think we have anything updated for that. School safety audit reports, that, we don't have anything listed for that. Attending committee meetings, no one suggested anything for that. So if we move forward... no one suggested anything for that. So if we move forward, we should be able to get through things within the next, we're gonna be until 11 o'clock,
Just very, very briefly, from the administration's perspective, the only time-sensitive matter is to get board approval for the key questions that we raised at our last meeting regarding the George with RFP. We do not have a meeting between now and the 31st when I need to submit the RFP. So that is the only matter that, from, from the administration's perspective.
All right. What my concern is regarding that SROs, the first day of school is September the 8th. So what happens with that? To me, that's time-sensitive. Code of Ethics, students on the first day of school are held responsible unless we schedule another meeting. Ms. Rizzi?
Yes, so that's an action item, the SRO.
No, no, it's not. Thank you. Thank you. It's not. You're correct. That's right. That was just administrative business. Okay, then. So the only item that we would have at this point would be, thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Would be the, which is not an action item, receive an update on George with construction process. So we should have had that under action. Okay, we should have had that under action. So are we in agreement to just move forward with that and then we can go into, we'll close the meeting and then, excuse me, take a break from the meeting and then go into close. Are we in agreement with that?
Repeat what you said, Ms. Burke.
Yes, that, as Mr., the other items, I'm thinking the SROs, that was an action item, but it is not. So that means the only item that we would need approval of, which should have been under action, is the construction for George with, per moving on by August 31st, since our next meeting is not until September 13th. I hear a lot of chatter on the side, but I don't hear anybody's hand up or whatever, so. Yeah, we are. So is everybody in favor of at this point?
Since there are no action items, we were just discussing that. We just go through each of the items really quickly and move to the closed session.
Mm-hmm. No, that's not what I said. With George with, we need to move, we need to address that. We need to address George with tonight because the agreement was that we make a decision by August 31st. So if we can do that and then put everything else off. You good?
No, no. Is, is there, is there a vote for George with tonight? Is what we're asking? Yes, okay.
I, I can make this three minutes.
We need to vote on the superintendent, the questions from the last meeting, correct? That's what he's trying to say, so he can move forward because if we don't discuss that and we're trying to hold him accountable.
Well, let's do it.
It's, it's because we moved.
All right. So we'll go ahead with that. We're gonna, this is what we're gonna do then. Thank you all so very much. It is time to move forward. So 4.04, as I stated earlier, should have been an action item. Receive an update on George with construction process. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are we supposed to vote on this before we?
Can we allow him to give his update first and then we move forward and decide then? He needs to tell us what's in place before the 31st.
I hear that, Ms. Burke. We are skipping things. So don't, shouldn't we vote on it first and then?
Should we do what?
Shouldn't we vote to amend things first and then?
Oh, we can. That's why I was asking, was everybody in agreement? We can. We could do either way, reach consensus, or we can vote. Would you like to make the motions? Is that more comfortable?
Okay.
If you'd like to. As long as we reach consensus, which I thought we were at consensus to, was there someone that wasn't in agreement to addressing George with tonight and that we'll put the other items on for the next meeting?
I mean, can we just say consensus without voting? We can?
Yeah. Ms. Lilly?
Yes, if there's consensus and there's no objection, certainly, well, you've done it tw- several times, different ways in the past, but if you, if there's consensus to move those items, it can be stated at this time. Because you've reached the timeframe, basically, that you've agreed to end them.
I was just not clear that that could.
So are we good? All right, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, on the first slide of the presentation, I have shared what I believe is the board's desire in terms of four key questions. In terms of the type of design, to ask for prototypes. In terms of the level of lead certification, to ask for at least silver. In terms of the theme, I heard energy around arts and STEM. So we would ask bidders to be prepared to design either with a final determination to be made by the community. And in terms of community amenities, we didn't discuss this too much, but I think health is something broadly speaking that is of most interest to the community, to the board, and so recommended including in the bids that a health clinic would be part of the design. As a separate matter, I did want to share the enrollment data from George with over the last several years, as well as the building utilization data from Cropper GIS, who managed our rezoning process, to share and advise the board that, based on both of these data sources, in the fall of 2026, using, again, both data sources, this school would be north of 1,700 students. And so respectfully, request that the board reconsider its directive to craft the RFP for 1,600 students, given this data. I recognize that may be a more contentious matter, and so I'm happy for the board to bifurcate the first four matters from the fifth matter in the interests of expediency. Thank you.
Questions regarding the report of which Mr. Superintendent Cameras has put on the floor at this time? Are there any questions regarding what's before us?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Young? Thank you. Ms. Duer?
Good evening. I would like to make a motion regarding the fifth item. I agree with Mr. Cameras' assessment that it's most expedient to split these votes. So my, I would like us to readdress the 1,600 student limit at George with. In addition to the Cropper data point, as well as the historical data that Mr. Cameras highlighted in the presentation, both of which show that George with will be over capacity by the time that it opens, no matter, regardless of the measurement. I also had a discussion with Dr. Damian Pitt, who is the Associate Professor of Urban and Regional Planning at VCU, who flagged the ish, some of the issues with Cropper's population analysis during rezoning. He was on my, he was one of my rezoning reps. And if you recall, he sent a memo, he's a city planner. The Cropper GIS team estimates are based on a widely conservative population growth assumptions for the city as a whole. For example, to update this point, the Cropper population estimates for the city of Richmond were 214,000 in 2020. And the latest census data released last week shows the city population is already at 226,000 in 2020. So in his assessment, all of the utilization projections are low, and the new George with high school will be even more overcrowded than the numbers purported by Cropper would suggest. So I think it is extremely irresponsible for us to limit the size of George with high school based on three separate and independent data sources. So my motion is to amend the school board RFP resolution that mandates that the size of George with should be constructed to be no more than 1,600 students, to be revised such that the size of George with will be the greater of 1,600 students or 85% of the projected building's functional capacity in the next 10 years.
Second. It's been moved by Mrs. Duer and seconded by Mrs. Page to amend the RFP revised to 85% of the population or?
The amendment is to amend the school board's RFP resolution that mandates the size of George with should be constructed to be no more than 1,600 students.
Right.
To be revised such that the size of George with will be the greater of 1,600 students or 85%, 85% of the projected building's functional capacity in the next 10 years.
All right, it's been moved in properly. Second, is, is there discussion questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Duer, clarifying question. The, I can't recall specifically, but I believe the original resolution may have indicated a square footage for the building, which would determine its functional capacity. And based on my recollection, though I think Mr. Young may have made the resolution, so I would defer to him, 85% of that may actually be less than 1,600, in which case your motion wouldn't increase it at all, if that's what you are intending to do.
What I'm intending to do is give us flexibility so that the building can accommodate more than 1,600 students, if necessary. So do you have a recommendation on how to amend
Honestly, I would just go with 2,000 students and tell the bidders to design a school for 2,000 students, just to make it simple and clear to the public and to our families.
Okay. Ms. Page, are you okay with that amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Duer, would you be so kind and that, thank you so very much for explaining that. I better understand as well, to give us the numbers. So Mrs. Duer, would you restate that? And I know you have sent that to our clerk.
I'll send you the revise, but the motion now is to revise, to amend the school board's RFP resolution that mandates the size of George with be constructed to no more than 1,600 students to now 2,000 students.
Based upon?
Cropper historical enrollment and VCU School of Planning population growth estimates.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. It's been moved by Mrs. Duer and seconded by Mrs. Page to increase the number from six, to amend the original RFP to move from 1,600 to 2,000. Any questions? Mrs. White and then Ms. Rizzi, then Mrs., you let me know.
I just have a.
Okay, Ms. White.
Hello?
Go ahead.
I just have a statement to make. We're continuing to, continue with this 2,000, 2,000, and 2,000. I am not in favor of Cropper, the way they rezoned our schools and the numbers that they have over the years. They did it twice. And if it is a real big issue about 2,000 students and encompassing approximately 300,000 square feet, why aren't we, I've been saying this every, almost every meeting, let's get a feasibility study. We need the right number. We can't just be estimating based on Cropper. We need the right number today. Cropper has been a couple of years back. We need the exact number, if that's what we're gonna do. Do a feasibility study. I can't go on Cropper, not the way they rezoned our schools. Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we are under time, time constraints, but I think this discussion is worthy. So if we don't plan for 2,000, then there's no plan for growth. And we talk about Cropper and his numbers, but in 2012, we are, it was approved for rezoning for the elementary. And at that time, those new schools were adequately planned for. But what happened in 2013, the previous administration and the school board changed zones, which created problems over enrollment, overcrowdiness, and also we had an influx of student population. So if you make adjustments to the school zones, of course you won't run into problems. And it resulted in trailers. And I'm speaking of Bruer Rock Elementary School. Those trailers were not intended for the use of that land. It was egregious then and it's egregious now. We will be making the same mistake with George with high school if we do not plan for growth. And I'm gonna say this every time we have this discussion, because I can give you the historical perspective, I can provide you the facts, and I'm gonna repeat this every time we have this discussion. We have to do right by our families and the students that we serve.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, what I don't want to see, and I want to reiterate what I think is a very astute suggestion by my colleague, Ms. White, we need, we need an updated feasibility study. What I don't want to see, I don't think anyone wants to see, is the opposite, a severely underutilized building. You know, a building that's way too, you know, I mean, mega high schools, you know, I have my own opinions about them. But, you know, to me, the larger a school is, sometimes the less personalized it is. And if it is unnecessarily large, I think that would be a waste and a, and a problem. And so I would like to do this right. I would like to do it with accurate numbers. I'd like to see, you know, what the projection is for how a new tech center will affect our enrollments at old high schools. I have also been talking to industry professionals who have discussed how some of our high schools are extremely underutilized and others are over. And I'd like to see that balanced. And I really feel like it's worth taking time to do this right by getting an updated feasibility study. Now, in terms of time, maybe Mr. Cameras, you can talk to us about what kind of timeline we'd be talking about to get that done. But I think that that is important to do this well and to not just necessarily assume that because something is larger, we're doing right by our kids. Bigger is not always better unless, you know, there is clear evidence that we need a school that big. And I, I think there are too many unknowns here. And I, like I said, I'm basing this on a lot of discussions I've had with industry professionals in the last couple of weeks. That's where I stand. That's what I'm asking for.
Thank you, Ms. Rizzi. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just have a quick comment. So if we're requesting a feasibility study now, I'm just trying to understand, where did the 1,600 number come from to begin with? Is there data that supports the 1,600? Because if we are in fact anti-Cropper, and I'm not familiar with too much of it because I am new to the board, but I just think the back and forth and being almost 10 days away from an RFP that we requested to be put out to say now that we need a feasibility study, I'm just trying to understand how come we didn't do this prior to requesting the RFP to be put out. And so I think it's not so much about the school being bigger or smaller. I think it's about being accurate. And we, again, and I'll say this again, are all. I think it's about being accurate. And we, again, and I'll say this again, are all responsible for what has been going on for the last four months regarding George With. And so, we have to stop, get a study, don't get a, I mean, if we are not going to come with a concrete plan, and granted, I understand that the RFP goes out in a couple of days, but we need a plan that every time we have this discussion, it takes us two to three hours with questions that we should have had already available for the community. And there are things also in here that the community that we're saying will ask after the fact. But the biggest concern was the community needs to be involved. The community needs to be involved. So, I just think that we have to stop with the, every time we have this discussion, what we need versus, it is a clear indication that we didn't fully think this through. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Page and then Ms. Rizzi? Ms. King, okay, I'm listening. All right, Mrs. Gibson, then Mrs. Page, then Mrs. Rizzi, is that correct? Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a bit, we're kind of confronted right now with a bit of a double standard. You know, at the end of the day, the questions about outstanding questions, if we're going to ask the questions to ourselves, we need to ask the same, the very same question to the mayor, who has issued an RFP for the schools without school board approval outlining a scope that, that has never been approved. So, so that, that's the elephant in the room. I am, I'm frustrated and disappointed that we're continuing to vote on this again and again. And I just got a call like I see it. If, if I had tried to vote on the same thing over and over again, there would have been a problem. I mean, I would have loved to have a revote when the board voted to get rid of seventy-five positions without public approval. I would love to have a revote on the fact that we have adopted off-the-shelf school curriculums. I'd love to have a revote on the fact that we've sliced science and social studies in half despite the fact that we've set up STEM programs at Henderson and MLK. I'd love to have some revotes. But here we are voting on this for, I don't know, the sixth time? Let me just do a little basic division. The RFP that we have agreed to stipulates a building that's six hundred, two hundred and sixty thousand square feet. The Huguenot Building is two hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet. Now, we have estimated a sixteen hundred pop, student population. Now, let me tell you, there's flexibility in there. I don't know if you all have designed a building before. I know you haven't. I have. A lot of it has to do with the program of the building. So, this building, depending on how it's designed, could accommodate various numbers of students. The way that, you know, the VDOE, according to the VDOE, if we were to allocate a hundred and fifty square foot per student, then it would be, it would be a much larger building with many more students in it. So, let's stop splitting hairs here, people. We've made the vote. We can move on. I'd like to see, we already know how this is going to play out. I mean, we've done it about eight trillion times. I want to go home and go to bed. So, look, we are ready to proceed. Let's move forward and let's go to bed.
Thank you, Mrs. Page.
Yes. So, I appreciate the comments my colleague, Ms. Jones, made. We did not clearly think this through because the superintendent, we will be providing a hiring update, and we are talking about the size of the school, all of that. We have no guidance from our procurement department because those positions are not in place. And I'm concerned about the low number of applicant pool. So, my point is, we have no guidance as far as what is the best path to take since we do not have a procurement department in place. The RFP is supposed to go out, what, the end of the month? That's going to be out on the street ninety days? And we all know that the hiring process, that's going to take some time. So, I just really want us to be thoughtful and intentional because this is impacting children. And again, I don't care who builds a school. We just need to get it done.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Rizzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am curious as to where the initial two thousand student number came from with the original RFP. Does anyone have any answers?
My understanding is it came from the same data sources that I'm providing this evening.
Ms. Dour?
I, I know we're all frustrated with this conversation. I hope that we can just take a deep breath and, and listen to each other. I'm not proposing that we're revoting on the resolution about schools building schools. I'm not. I am simply trying to avoid a mistake of building a school that is too small. I have no idea where the sixteen hundred number came from. If someone can please illuminate me, please. But I have not one, not two, but three separate data sources that show that the population at George With will be greater than sixteen hundred. I have zero data sources that show me that sixteen hundred is the right size for George With. I have three that show me that it must be greater than sixteen hundred. So, all I'm trying to do is not waste a ton of money around this already messed up process. I am happy to move on. I'm excited that we're finally, you know, going to not have to talk about this anymore. But it is irresponsible for this board to build a school that is going to be overcrowded on the day that it opened by three separate data sources. So, if we want to do a feasibility study, fine, but that's only going to delay things further. I've got three data sources. I don't need any more information to know that it's going to be overcrowded on the day that it's built. And I personally do not want to be there to watch the show that's going to happen.
Madam Chair, I'd call for a question.
And a question on the floor is the two thousand versus, all right, do we need to vote on that? When he just called a question, we need to vote on that, correct?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Young has called a question, and we do need to vote on that. Those, we need to, which means we need to have a motion in place. Say what? Excuse me? Someone say something?
That was the, it was the audience.
Okay. All right. So, do we need a motion for that, Mrs. Madam Attorney? Or we just go ahead and, and vote? Mr. Young, you ready to do that? To be so kind?
Yeah, call the question.
All right. So, now we need a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms. Dour?
Just to call the question?
Yeah, to call the question. All right, we're ready to move forward. Any questions? If not, we're ready to vote? Madam? The question?
I have a question.
Okay. Well, if you said call the question, can you ask a question? Yeah, we can't ask a question, right. It's after ten o'clock, okay? Just so we said we're going to stop at ten. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
We're voting on whether to call the question, correct?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
It's okay, order, please. Let's move forward. It's okay. Who is it? Four, five? A change, Master, yes. We'll come back. Thank you, we'll come back. Ms. Gibson said yes.
District four, Jonathan Young.
Aye.
District five, Stephanie Rizzi.
Yes.
District six, Dr. Shana Harris Mah.
Yes.
District seven, Cheryl Burke.
Yes.
District eight, John Page.
Yes.
District nine, Cole Johnson.
And District two would like to change their vote. Yes. Right. So, if we all said yes, it's done.
So, now that...
One moment. You good, Ms. Clerk? Very good. Pass your announcement. Now, you have a question?
No, I was just going to repeat my motion in case folks wanted it.
Yes.
I motion to revise the RFP to build a new George With with a capacity of two thousand students.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Dour and seconded by Mrs. Page. Capacity to two thousand for George With High School. Any questions or no? Or any discussion? If not, we're ready to vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
No. No.
District four, Jonathan Young.
No.
District five, Stephanie Rizzi.
No.
District six, Dr. Shana Harris Mah.
No.
District seven, Cheryl Burke.
Yes.
District eight, John Page.
Yes.
District nine, Cole Johnson.
Five, four. Five, four.
Madam Chair. Madam, Madam Chair, I would, uh... Madam Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion to address the superintendent's questions. The school board authorizes a request for proposals, RFP, for design services for a new George With to encompass no more than a total of two hundred and sixty thousand square feet of finished interior space to accommodate the requested student capacity of sixteen hundred students. Said RFP shall close to bids immediately after forty-five days. The RFP shall instruct the selected design services firm to be ready within eight months following award of the contract to provide full bid-ready construction design documents. To accommodate a fast-track process, RFP shall request that firms submit at least one prototype-as-built design. Any design submitted shall be instructed to allow for customization of the building to accommodate RPS Passion for Learning theme. Incorporation of shared spaces should be prioritized within the design accommodating community use outside of regular school hours. Health clinic and an ESL welcome center are two possible shared spaces. The new school should be substantially complete and ready for occupancy within twenty-four months of the award of the construction contract. A design shall incorporate any level of LEED certification with the goal of ensuring efficient energy use to minimize ongoing maintenance costs of the building. So, moved.
Is there a second to Mr. Young's motion?
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Young and seconded by Mrs. Gibson to move forward with the RFP. Any questions? Are we ready to vote?
I got a question.
Yes.
From Mr. Cameras. Can you give us information on the three positions where they stand at now?
Yes, ma'am. They're, they're in the presentation.
No, I mean, when, when do you plan to choose the person?
Well, we are, we have invited two candidates in the director pool for an interview. We have invited two candidates in the manager role of procurement for an interview, and we are reviewing performance tasks from four candidates for the construction project manager.
So, is that within the next two weeks, three weeks?
Unfortunately, I can't say. For example, the director role, we have two candidates invited for an interview. I can't hypothesize as to how they will do in the interview. So, we may have our finalist here or, or we may not, in which case we'll have to continue to search for the, the individual.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to inquire if you could provide the board with information on any of the performance tasks that are, the candidates are being asked to do. And I would like to formally request, I believe I've made this request before, that we include on the interview panel, uh, industry professionals that are in these roles in, in the surrounding counties, potentially Henrico, Chesterfield. I'm certain they'd be, they're following this and they'd like to support the district. And so, I think that would be of incredible value given the fact that we are building this department, rebuilding the department. And so, we'd like to hear back from the administration on, on the interview process and, and getting that outside feedback. Thank you.
So, Ms. Gibson, was that a motion or a suggestion? That was a suggestion moving forward?
I mean, I don't, I don't think that we should have to motion for something like that.
Just want to make sure we're clear. All right, thank you. All right. All right, Madam Clerk, we're ready to move. Someone else? Ms. Dour, shall we wait for her? She did. Okay, dokie. We will wait for her to get back before moving forward. Ms. Dour, here she is. Is that Ms. Dour? Yeah, all right. So, maybe we'll go ahead and start with Madam Clerk, um, two, District two, until Ms. Dour gets to her seat.
Yes. Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
No. No.
Abstain.
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 All right, colleagues, we are now ready to go into close. If we can have that motion. Jonathan, you have it? Okay. Say what? Okay.
We ready, Ms. Madam Burke?
Wait a minute, we haven't made the motion yet. Let's, let's give us a minute so we can vote on it. Mr. Young is getting ready to make the motion now. Someone else already has it, Ms. Clerk? Did you give it to someone else?
The closed motion, I have it. I was looking ready to read it.
You do have it?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be so kind, Ms. Mohammed?
Absolutely. Pursuant to Section two, two point two, three, seven, eleven, A, two, and seven of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty. As amended, I move that the school board of the city of Richmond convene and close Session Two. Consider the promotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board and school division, or for discussion, consideration, or interview, or...
or for discussion, consideration, or interview of prospective candidates to discuss employment matters as detailed in the Personnel Actions Report of this date. Two, consideration of admission or any matters that would resolve the disclosure of information contained in this galactic record concerning student matter 2021-06, consultation with legal counsel, and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual profitable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body in real estate matter 2021-01.
Thank you, Mrs. Dr. Harris Muhammad. Mr. Young has seconded that. Are we ready to vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. But, excuse me, Ms. Jones, go ahead. Thank you. The motion? I was just trying to catch everyone before leaving because it was stated that we would stay where we are and that the room would be empty. And if you didn't get a lunch, Mrs. Hadasco will be bringing it to you. So, because of movement and having to come back. So, I know some people want to take a break.